Good evening and welcome to this, the December 16th, 2024 Meeting of the City of Summit's zoning board of adjustment. I'm Joe Steiner and I am this year's Chair of the zoning Board. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. In accordance with the New Jersey State Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this regular meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page, and it's also being broadcast on Summit's governmental channel, which is Comcast Channel 34, or Verizon Channel 30. A transcript of the meeting is also being taken using the video and audio, so we need speakers to utilize one of the microphones in the room. Please note that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and in the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Chairman Steiner?
Here.
Vice Chairman Leukits?
Here.
Mr. Yuko?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Zahn?
Here.
Mr. Kirin?
Here.
Mr. Malay?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Ms. Chiefo?
Here.
Mr. Faskins?
Here.
Mr. Chanchouli?
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Sounds like a full house.
Yep.
Andy Ball, sitting to my right, is the Board's Attorney. He advises Board members on matters of law and is the key interface with the applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Stephanie Sulios, who just called the roll, is a city employee and the zoning board's secretary. She works with the applicants on preparing their applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. She also does not vote on the applications. Also present are experts who are hired annually by the Board to provide input to the Board. Present is Tom Barans from Burgess Associates, our Board Planner. Also, we have Marie Rafi, who is our Planner, whom, I'm sorry, our Engineer, whom, for 27 meetings, I've pronounced her name wrong. So I apologize, and I did it again.
Yes.
So say it right, so we get it right.
Rafi.
I used the E instead of the N.
That's okay.
Goodbye.
That's right.
Hopefully, next year's Chair will get it right. Our Board, these folks do not vote on the applications, but they do ask questions of the witnesses. Our Board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Before we enter the executive session to vote on an application, you will be advised how many votes are required. Each case begins with the applicant's attorney giving an overview of the application, and the process that has happened to date, and the variances that are required. We then hear from any additional expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why those variances are needed. Board members can ask any questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the Board members and the Board professionals have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about the case. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Please be careful as how you phrase your questions. They should not be preceded with a statement about the case, but should be a direct question to the witness. Also, before you ask your question, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record, and therefore you must use one of the microphones. After all the witnesses have been heard, members of the audience will have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about this application. Then the public hearing is closed, and we enter in what's called executive session, where the Board members discuss the case and we vote. You'll be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in that discussion. Tonight, I am changing the agenda a bit. The first case that we will take care of first quickly is the 695 Springfield Avenue Beacon Unitarian Universalist Congregation in Summit, and I believe you have the details on that.
So mostly, they've requested to carry, to have an opportunity for a fuller meeting in front of the Board, to be able to present all their witnesses. They would be asking to carry until March 17th, and they will be required to renotice for that new date.
So if anybody's here for that, it will not be heard tonight if the Board goes along with this. And is there a motion to carry this?
What's the carry date?
March 17th with notice.
With notice.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Chairman Leukits?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Is 29 Ridge Road ready to go?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. James Weber of Alfonso and Weber, on behalf of the applicant. We're currently in discussions with the neighbors of Glassband in an attempt to accommodate their requests. So we'd ask that we'd be put after the first hearing in order to allow those discussions to bear fruit.
Okay. I've had at least one member of the public ask to be able to make their statements in order to make another commitment. I don't know if that's, if I'm allowed to do that or not, so I'll ask my attorney.
We could if we wanted to, assuming
I have no objection.
consent of Mr. Weber, that we would open that hearing just for public comment to the extent necessary, close it until later on in the hearing, and then reopen it for a final deliberation and decision.
I believe the opposition also has an attorney. If they, I think they should agree to that or not. Are they still, are they in the room, or?
Aileen Brennan, I think it's outside. I can check if you
Yeah, I don't think we should do it unless we have approval of both attorneys. So we'll hold up for a moment here. And, but in the meantime, if the folks from 230 Oak Ridge Avenue want to assume the positions here and be ready, because they'll be the next case.
Aileen Brennan is here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If she would like to make her appearance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Aileen Brennan. I'm with the firm of Hill Wallach in Princeton, New Jersey, and I'm here representing Todd and Lisa Glassband, who are neighbors to the 29 Ridge Project, Ridge Road Project.
Okay. We've had a request because of other commitments to allow public comment before the first case that we're going to hear while you guys keep working outside. Mr. Weber has consented to that, and I thought would be appropriate for both sides, too.
As long as if you don't have a deal, I can say what I want to say.
Yes.
And you can call our expert. Yes. Right. We would consent to allowing that public comment at this time while we continue to work, provided that we're not a stop
Then we will open up the 29 Ridge Road hearing for the purpose of hearing any public that wishes to make their comments now. Ms. Sank?
Phyllis Sank, 33 Ridge Road.
And if you could please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give on this matter is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
It is.
And just please state, spell your last name for the record?
I'm sorry.
Can you please spell your last name for the record?
S.A.N.K.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. This is the third meeting I've been to to try to speak. And I'm actually, I am the next-door neighbor to 29 Ridge Road. My house was built in 1945 with a nice big white wall around it that no one would be allowed to build today. And up until this time, no one could see into my backyard, my garden, or anything. Now, when the former house, the, they happen to be our relatives, the Liss house, was torn down, I knew that there was going to be a much larger house going there. I also knew, as a former member of the planning board, that the first thing I was ever told when I joined the planning board, was appointed by Mayor Janet Whitman, who some of us still remember, was that a man is permitted to develop his property, and that that's what variances are for. I knew that this was going to be a big house, and I knew that my white wall was, in a sense, going to be breached. But I also knew that the developer had the right to build the house. And I hoped that by working with him, we could get some screening between my house and his house, the house he was building, and work together to create the most harmonious neighborliness we could do. And I have worked with Matthew, and I have, I am satisfied that he has tried to do everything possible to make that house work. I knew from Krista Anderson, the former zoning officer, that he was building it on the existing footprint. He was very careful to leave those walls up. So however you all decide, obviously, I, that is your call. But I think you have to understand that this man has the right to build that house, and I've got to make the best of it, as do all of the neighbors. And I thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody for this witness?
Okay.
Any questions from the professionals? Any questions from the attorneys?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions in the public for her?
I have one question. I do. I have one question.
Yes.
Ms. Sank, I just wanted to
You want to identify yourself, please?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Lisa Glassband, 42 Fernwood Road. I live on the other side of the property. I just wanted to ask if the accommodation that you reached with Mr. Meckelopolis called for him agreeing to all of the trees on your side of the property line to retain them?
No.
Have you looked at the current plan?
Yes.
And it doesn't call for 10 trees to be retained on your side of the property line, eight of which his expert has already said are in poor condition?
He has promised to put up proper screening for it. We're working together on that.
Is that what's on the plan that's been submitted before the Board?
I really have, I don't have to respond to this, and I'm going to leave now. As far as I'm concerned, I'm satisfied with what he's planning to do between his property and mine.
Okay, I would submit it's, it's, keep everything that's there.
You can present your other stuff later, okay? I promise. Any other public comments on that testimony? If not, why would, what am I, recessing this? Recessing this particular hearing until later, and we will go ahead and move on to 230 Oak Ridge Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I jumped the gun a little bit. We're here on behalf of the applicants, Thomas and Allison McMillan, owners, and finally, right, you're in your new home at 230 Oak Ridge Avenue. And while I said new home, it was a renovation. It was not a brand-new home. You did an extensive renovation. This application This application is for the disturbance of steep slopes over 15%. The app, the property has 5,550 square feet of 15% or more steep slopes, and they're proposing to disturb 3,600 square feet. 1,800 square feet was previously disturbed by the city's work in the easement area to replace the sanitary sewer line. With this proposal, the applicants hope to improve their exterior front yard with a formal front walkway to the front door. That'll be safer. You'll see a picture that shows the grade change. And an outdoor, they already have an in-ground pool, but they're looking to upgrade that pool and add a little bit more patio around that pool area. Okay. If the board has any questions of me before I-
Okay, questions with the attorney, go ahead.
Hi, you said that, you mentioned that this was a renovation and not a new-
Correct.
Yeah, for the stock preservation, commissions, comments, say something else.
I understand. I believe it was a miss, that's correct. It was not a new, a new construction, it was just a renovation. Sure.
Any questions from our professionals?
Not at this time. I just have one, I have one for clarification.
Please.
So the steep slope disturbance, just to clarify, the part that the city disturbed before, that's not included in your, it's 3,600 additional, I just feel like that fact is kind of confusing to me, I don't know if that was included in your 3,600 square feet?
It's included in the 3,600.
The city's 1,800 square feet?
Yes.
That is included, okay. So it's really 1,800 additional square feet besides what the city did for the sewer work?
Correct. Correct. And, and we'll have actually a video showing the work in the easement area, you'll get a good picture of, of what we're talking about.
Any other questions for this witness? If not, with the attorney, not for the, you're not a witness, yes?
I'm happy to answer any question.
Anyway, let's move to the, to your first witness.
Thank you. If we could have Thomas and Allison be sworn in?
Yep, if you could each raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And one at a time, please state your name, spell your last name.
Allison McMillan, M.A.C., M.I.L.L.A.N.
Thomas McMillan, M.A.C., M.I.L.L.A.N.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please explain the current condition of the property?
Sure, let me make sure. So currently, as was indicated, we did a renovation of the home, it's its original footprint. The yard, as I think the experts will testify, was disturbed, including driveway and a number of other existing improvements had to be removed to give right away to the easement. And right now, we have, as the picture would suggest, kind of a very kind of steep fall off from the sidewalk, and in the rear, we obviously have a need to restore just some basic grading, the driveway, and really just kind of complete the work, which would include, I think is the submission, includes a full landscaping of the property with, you know, appropriate plantings and everything, and-
I'm going to show that other picture that we talked about, if I, if you could just confirm this is also accurate picture, both very accurate photos.
So the leaves on the ground will tell you this was a recent one, this is a week ago or so, you know, sharing this, just, we have fortunately a high traffic of dog walkers and kids and families that come along the sidewalk, and I think as you see, you know, it's a pretty steep drop off, there's not a lot of shielding there, so part of the plan that we submitted would be to put some gentle terracing down from the sidewalk in a set of steps that would allow for easier access. If you come to the home now, the only way to get to the entry level of the home is to walk down a very steep driveway, days like today, it's pretty slippery. So this would be characteristically in line with the neighborhood, probably two-thirds of the homes have, you know, a central walkway to the front door, just trying to line up with the rest of the neighborhood and make that slope a little less, more, you know, kind of concerning for us.
And now, while I get our video to go here, can you explain the proposal, please?
I'll do my best. So our proposal in the rear of the property, the home is a existing walkout basement home, the driveway circles around the back. The proposal is really, I think, fairly straightforward, just to bring the grading off of that walkout level across the rear yard. I think Mr. Clark will talk to you guys a little bit, you know, when we did the sewer easement and that was replaced, we found that that pipe was less than 14 inches under the ground in places, which is not in the best health long term of that, so we want to kind of put some additional grading on top of that, which would allow for, I guess, just a traditional flat backyard. There is a pool that was pre-existing with the home that, that, you know, we are going to put a fence around, so part of what you'll see on the plan is to put a fence that's on the uphill side of any sort of grade or retaining, bless you, and loop that around to the house, connect it back to the house to make sure that the pool is secure. And in the front, just put, like I said, I think, two terrace walls and a central walkway down the front to kind of mitigate that steep drop off from the curb. Makes it a little more visually appealing, I think, it's in characteristic with the rest of the neighborhood. There you go, thank you.
This is going to have to be A2, please?
So I guess I'll pause there.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I'm not sure what else.
Oh, no problem. Let's go back to the, thank you. I think we can go to the video. So this was, when was this around?
I think that the ultimate timeframe when the construction was done, I know I swore to honesty, I think to the best of my recollection, I think it was kind of midsummer. The initial dialogue started in February, planned date, I think it got pushed back a little bit, so maybe it's May to June, to be honest, and that's the easement unfortunately across the property there.
And those are the city's excavators?
That was the, yeah, the city's contractor came in, and you can, I mean, see that it pretty bisects the property, and-
And they have the excavators in the back, right, all over those deep slopes?
That's, that was the majority, I think, of the disruption there.
So these drones are your drones?
This is not my drone. Let's be, let's be exceedingly clear, this is a photography drone, there's, that's all that, and it doesn't even belong to me.
An FAA-approved drone at a time prior, it's November 18th.
It was daytime.
So is that retaining wall already in?
That retaining wall was in part of the original grading permit before the easement and the sewer pipe was discovered.
Yeah, so you had an approved plan, right, and then this happened, and then you decided, all right, it's time to go in for what we want in the, in the yard?
Yeah, I mean, I think some of it was just restorative, too, right? So you can kind of see towards the bottom, I guess, left-hand corner of the house, the driveway obviously was moved as part of that dig, and so putting that back and grading appropriately from there, and like I said, had some advice of the engineering team that providing additional depth of coverage over the pipes is wise, and that would also create fewer steps in a kind of more flat and safe backyard, so.
Thank you. And likewise with the front walkway, right, safer walkway to your front door from the sidewalk?
Yes, driveway is at a pretty decent slope just by the topography of the plan, so-
And you're keeping it?
Yeah, the driveway is, is not, obviously we're not changing that, that's where it is.
Okay, did you have a chance to review the administrative reports of the board's professionals?
Yes.
Okay, and subject to what we'll talk to, your experts, you're okay with?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you have a chance to speak with your neighbors?
Yes, both of our immediate neighbors are longtime friends and new friends and supportive of the work, and have known us since before the work, before when we originally purchased the house, and they're great, we've spoken to, they also just put in a nice front center walkway and steps in, and we were talking about that, so everybody we had a chance to speak to seemed supportive.
Thank you. And you had professionals assist you with this application who are here this evening? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions from our professionals?
Yeah, so I, can, can we go back and just talk about the timeline of the walls versus the sewer? Were the, were the walls put in as a result of the sewer work, or were you, did you already have the walls in?
Andrew, can-
Oh, okay.
Andrew knows the exact, because he did all the permitting and all of this.
Okay.
All right, then I'll save my question.
Thank you.
Any others? Tom?
My question was going to be, how does, what's being proposed differ from what was approved by the city, but that might be a question.
So we'll, we'll wait for the expert. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, why don't you go to your next witness?
Thank you.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Andrew Clark, C.L.A.R.K.E.
Thank you, and I'll note for the record, you've appeared before us a number of times, including recently. Any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
No change.
License is still in good standing?
In good standing, yes.
Any questions from the board, or would you like to accept him once again?
I'm not even going to look around, yes, we accept your credentials. Please move ahead.
Is there a point where you're here too much?
Never.
All right, so, here we go.
Why, for Andrew?
Is it on?
It's on.
All right. So I'm going to make reference to the lock grading plan that was submitted as part of this package. It's the lock grading plan prepared by me, last revised September 9th, 2024. It might be, well, I'll just jump right into the proposal. A lot of it was very well described, I'll just give you a little bit of detail and sort of expound on some of those items, and give a little bit of background and history. So initially, survey was done, in this case, I didn't do the survey, but used it as the background for the project and for the grading. Permit plan was developed. At that time, and the original submission was in, in August of 2023, and then there were the couple revisions that are shown on here, the December and then March. So in the initial submission that was made, it was immediately identified by the engineers that, hey, you don't have a, the sewer that's running through the property shown on, on this, and so I went out and did some supplemental survey work and investigation. There was a manhole shown in the lower-left corner, but what wasn't shown was the other end of it at, by the neighboring house. I had some old records, was able to track that down, it was underneath the, the grass a bit, but we found it, did some supplemental survey, and said, oh, here it is, and, and so the engineer said, well, that's great, we need an easement, we'd like you to commit an easement for that sanitary line, and while you're at it, since you're going to be doing work out here, let's TV the line. So we TV'd the line, checked it, and down in this area, and then just onto the neighbor's property were a couple of identified problematic areas with the existing sanitary line. So that, I don't know if they were full blockages, but they were obstructing in some measure of the flows, so the engineers said, you know what, you're going to be doing work out here, let's just replace this, this section right now. Of course, right now, it took months, and that's fine, that's the nature of things. And that's what the video depicts is the process of that. But in that process, this entire section of steep slopes down here, as you saw on the video, was essentially disturbed by either the machinery itself, the excavation, or the spoil piles when they were staging soil. There were a couple of trees that were directly over the line in a few places that were removed. I think in the video you can see that one of them was retained down there. And we also, in looking at that, realized that there was inadequate cover over this pipe, there was only about, in some cases, as little as almost 12 or 14 inches, which is, really wouldn't be allowed if you were laying that pipe today, and so they knew we were looking at doing some work in here, and we said, look, we're going to do some further enhancements, we'll get some more cover on that pipe, we already disturbed the steep slopes, so we'll come into the board for that, recognize that, that disturbance along with a couple of other areas that we'll identify that will also be affected. So that, that was sort of the process that led to where we are, and again, it took a substantial number of months to get all the construction forces mobilized and out there to do that work. As was indicated, the existing driveway that's sort of shown in the background with dash lines right there, and then behind that driveway, there was a concrete wall that was like three or four feet high. So that pipe was actually running either through or under that wall, so all that had to come out in order to rerun this, this line. That gives you sort of the backdrop of, of how we got to that point and what happened with the sewer. Then we did commit the easement, filed that, all that's taken care of, and the line is now replaced. So looking at a bigger picture, the original permit plan did not have the upper wall, and this wall was truncated short of the steep slope area initially, you know, to stay out of that zone, and so that lower wall was part of the original permit plan, because it wasn't in a steep slope area, and we were start, stopping short over here so as not to disturb that, we were planning to meet existing grades before that steep slope area. So that's how that lower wall came to be built as part of the permit plan. What wasn't allowed was what we're now proposing to the other side of the pool with just a little bit of cleanup on the edge, with like a little seat wall on, on the far edge of the pool, and cleanup of the grades over there to sort of level it out a little bit. Also rehabbing of the proposed pool equipment in the same location as where it is now, essentially. And the driveway, we're planning to sort of turn it, it's going to be existing driveway from the back corner of the house up, and in the back here where it was all torn up anyway, we're going to reconfigure that so it's sort of orients better with turning movements and parking and whatnot in the back. What it also results in back here is a level area that comes off in terms of our proposed condition, so by adding the second-tier wall and, and putting some fill in here, we level off this yard, which right now is, that's steep slopes there, but the rest of it is kind of steep. You know, it's, it's, you know, eight to 12%, 14% in this area, so it's, it's got a pretty good slope to it. What we're going to do is sort of level that off and bend the contours a little bit, so sheet flow will go more towards the county property that's behind us. And then coming off the end of the driveway where we had this wall that was there before, it's going to be a leveled area, so we're going to have proper cover over the pipe, and it, it actually would be in the instance where that pipe then had a problem, which we hope wouldn't happen for a long time now that it was replaced, the, the impact to the driveway area would be much less in that scenario than what the existing condition had with the wall and the driveway that was there. So this is a much better arrangement. So this slope, we're recognizing as disturbed, it's already been disturbed as I described. The slope a little bit around the backside where we're just tying into the grades- The slope a little bit around, um, the backside, where we're just tying into the grades, and then a little bit of this area along the side. In, in this area, I'm quantifying that around seven hundred and fifty square feet of disturbance over there. And then, in the front, we're planning to take that sloped area that's by the sidewalk and put a two and a half foot wall with a gentle grade, and a two and a half foot wall with a nice leveled area by the sidewalk. And landscaping throughout all that, that area. And then with the walk, that central walk that comes down to the front door with steps along the, the wall and the slope area, so that, uh, that can be better navigated. Versus the driveway, which as was indicated from sort of this back corner of the house up, it's like, it, it, it becomes steep slopes at some point, over fifteen percent. It's basically like twelve to eighteen percent on this section of the driveway. So we're gonna keep that, but we don't wanna encourage or, you know, leave as the only option for pedestrian traffic to come down that driveway. So this steep slope in the front here is, is being disturbed entirely. And a little bit over on this area that's to the left side. So in total, including the area in the back that was already disturbed, we're at thirty-six hundred square feet. So, what I would say about the steep slope disturbance in this case is often always the case with steep slopes, the concern is excessive erosion, possible damage to, you know, property and what have you. In this case, the only ones, the only people that would be damaged theoretically is our property, since this is all sloping down and sloping down in these directions here. This is a little bit different in the back, because it's towards the rear end of the property, and the county property slopes pretty dramatically down to, um, glen side in the back. So, to the extent there's any concern of threat of erosion or, or some sort of harm, it would be our own harm. So really, then, the question is, how's it being managed during construction? I think that can be easily handled based upon what I just described. Um, the, the site has, you know, been under construction for some time. If there's a little bit of siltation that hits, it's gonna hit us, and then we'll just clean it up. But once the finished condition is realized, I think it'll be a substantial improvement. You'll eliminate the steep slopes in the front and, and calm down the steep slopes in these sides along the pool, and of course, eliminate this deep slope section in the back that was previously disturbed. So, in the end, I think it's gonna be a, a substantial improvement, especially with the landscaping that's planned. We, we have in this case, uh, about a fifteen hundred square foot increase in coverage. What I'm planning to do with this is the, the main, I'll call it culprit in terms of stormwater impacts would be this driveway coming down with the, the pavement grades there, bringing the water down. So we're just gonna put a drain in the corner. There is one in the existing, but it just comes and discharges at the bottom of the wall now and, uh, previously, and it was not very well maintained. But we're gonna put a new inlet here to a dry well that's gonna handle, handle the entire driveway, which is twenty-four hundred square feet. So it's substantially above, uh, you know, the, the increase in lock coverage that we're introducing with this improvement. And I think with that and the, the reasons I described a moment ago about who's really being impacted by it, I think this is a, a good application in terms of steep slopes, and there should be no adverse impacts to anyone. And ultimately, it's gonna be a, a very nice, beautiful project, which it already has become, but this'll sort of put the finishing touches on it. And I'm happy to take questions at this point, unless you want me to walk through the memo first.
We'll turn to our professionals first.
So what you're actually doing is, for this application, you're only adding an extra four foot wall in the property? Is that, the, the lower wall is already there?
Right, so we're adding, we're adding the upper wall and filling, adding some fill in that area. And then we're adding these two walls in the front to terrace that front section.
Okay, so let's talk about the backyard first, because I just wanna make sure I understand that. Um, so, so the neighbors', um, visual will see pretty much an eight foot wall. They'll see a lower four foot wall, and then tiered back will be another four foot wall. Is there anything that you're proposing to do to mitigate some of the visual impact?
Yeah, I believe there's landscaping, uh, being proposed for the whole property, and certainly for that area, um, to soften the, the look. It's really, it's really mainly on this side, over here, on the, on the north side or to the right. Um, this, there's no one back here to see those walls at all.
So the, um, what you have up on the screen there is-
A two, right, and that's a, a rendering of the landscape plan. They haven't nailed down exactly, they'd be happy to do a condition of approval and have that approved by John Linson.
Is there enough room, um, I don't, I don't know the distance between that lower wall and the property line?
There's about, it's about five feet in there.
Okay, and you have a fence along there, could you talk about the fences and where they are?
Yeah, you, you did make a comment about the fence, and, and I'm glad you did, because it caused us to have a little more discussion about it.
Yeah.
So what, what our discussion was is to bring the fence up to the top of the upper wall and follow that back over to, uh, and close the, the yard area for the pool. And then have some gates that are, that are available to get into those areas and access them.
Okay.
And you'll be able to access, you know, from the driveway side, you'll be able to access directly to those, to those spaces. But on the other side, where it's closed with the fence, we'll, we'll put a gate there. But, so we'll adjust that, so it'll handle fall protection as well and in, in, in the event that's a concern with the wall, and it, and it'll also handle the pool enclosure.
Any comments on what kind of fence it's going to be?
Uh, I, 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 we haven't, I haven't talked about that with the owners, you know, as far as what kind of fence. I mean, a lot of times, in these neighborhoods and these types of projects, the sort of faux wrought iron, you know, metal fences are pretty common, because they're more transparent and attractive.
I just, I wanted to make sure that the board had some idea if it was gonna be some solid fence that's up there, you got an eight foot wall.
I'm sorry, you have to come forward if you're gonna-
Yeah, I think he's supporting, uh, what, what I just said. That, that it would be a, you know, the, the metal type fence, um, four or five feet high, whatever's appropriate in this case. Uh, and I'm not sure exactly what the pool code says, but whatever the pool code requires, that's what it would be.
And are, are there any of those lower walls that are more than four feet tall that would need any fall protection?
No. No, and they're also, by enclosing it, they're not effectively pedestrian areas, where, you know, if you have the landscaping installed in the, in, in this layer in between and at the bottom, really isn't gonna be much pedestrian activity or other than maintenance in there.
Okay. How, do you, do you have an idea of how much soil is actually going to be brought in?
I haven't done any analysis of that yet, but I can provide that. I haven't done a calculation for that yet, though.
Okay. Um, and obviously, there's been soil that was brought in to level out that first course, right?
Right, that's right.
And part of that, so, so this drive, the, um, sanitary sewer easement was something that was granted as part of this, part, part of the project that happened, right?
Correct, when we went for permitting, they, the engineers said, you know, there's this sanitary line, we went through that discovery and supplemental survey, and they said, all right, we really need to have an easement here. We said, no problem, fine, and I wrote a description for the easement, provided that to them. So yes, all that was, came out of the permit process.
Okay, so there's, there's one little corner of the driveway that goes over that and-
Yeah, that, that was discussed, and they understood that. And, and as I indicated, while it's never the ideal, you know, it was there before, and what we're ending up with is a better condition in that sense, in terms of any, plus, we just replaced the line, so.
Right, right, so, and just for the board's, um, information, what I was asking was that, you know, they're putting a corner of the driveway over the top of that easement, um, and really, the, the alderman just needs to be aware that if something happens and the town needs access to that easement, they have the right to tear up that portion of the driveway, so.
Right.
What he's saying is, you know, it's a fairly new install, so, um, so hopefully that wouldn't be a problem. I think that's, I think that's all I had on this. There's no, um, you don't have any, uh, roof leaders coming down into the seepage pit, right?
No, that, that, that was a mistake in there, yeah, that's a, that's a holdover from another detail, yeah.
Yep, okay.
That's right.
Just wanted to check.
And, and, you know, in terms of water quality, which was another question that you had asked, you know, I do use an inlet detail that provides a degree of water quality by having sort of the pipe come up from the bottom and, and have some separation between the bottom. And you can even fit like a cap on it that allows water to go in and keeps out a lot of the leaf litter and, and debris that might get in there. So, you know, if it's constructed in this manner, it should provide a degree of water quality with an open bottom, so that, so that, you know, it still drains out.
Okay, okay, um, and I, I see that you have a, an overflow that is, is going from the seepage pit all the way to the back-
That's right.
-of the yard.
Yeah, to, to sort of the bottom of the upper wall.
Right.
And it'll have to be protected with riprap and, you know, erosion protections that are required.
Right, in the event that there is-
That it exceeds, that we have an extraordinary storm that exceeds the capacity, that's right.
Right, um, let me see, I think that was all I had. Those are all the questions I had.
Tom?
Yes, so, uh, just to follow up, looking at the plan that was submitted, uh, which is the lock grading plan, as well as the rendering being shown, the pool and the patio in the rear yard as depicted, um, what is the status of the, I guess, either the permitting or any approvals, are they, are they conceptual in nature? And the reason I'm asking is because they appear to be fairly close to the side lock on it.
Yeah, that's right, and, and, and so as part of the permitting, the permit plan had this section within that fifteen foot setback as not, not being touched. Like, we can't modify that or build a wall, or, or, that's where the patio is. So, so, so the patio that's around the pool is existing. What we're planning to do is, is rehab it and, uh, along that edge on that side, put a little seat wall and sort of clean up the grades, and then, and then rehab the equipment that's there.
So, it, it's there today, the reason I ask, well, we saw the pictures of the disturbance, pool was clear.
It was there, the, the, the apron was there.
I'll, I'll take your word.
It was just under mud at that point.
That may be, so if, if that's the case, um, obviously the permits would be contingent upon those improvements to remain and not being replaced, um, so, just wanted to offer that.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have two questions. The first question is related to the steep slopes in the front yard. So, um, I, you know, I, I understand why you wanna make it a tiered, um, entrance in the, the walkway, this, that makes sense. And I'm wondering, what is the height difference from the street to the bottom of that, like, to the last tier where you land? And I'm, you know, specifically wondering whether, if it's that steep, does this, should this be an area where a fence is actually considered at the road height? Or what is being considered, because it, essentially, basically, you're modifying the steep slope to say, well, instead of being like a slide right down, we're making it steps down, two big steps. You can still fall down one step to the next step, like there's, like, what's the drop? Because I'm wondering-
So the drop is about six feet? And so what, what we did in this case is two and a half foot wall, a little slope up to the other wall, and a two and a half foot wall. And then from this upper wall to the sidewalk, it's gonna be pretty level, slight pitch, but pretty level.
Okay, so that wouldn't like trigger any, um, I couldn't, it's really hard to tell what the elevations are on the drawing here.
Yeah, no, I know, the, the contour, I just was checking myself, at the sidewalk right here is five oh nine, and it's about five oh three or four at the bottom, so it's about six feet.
And on the left side, it looks like it might be five eleven on the, the left side, meaning, and five oh nine on the right side.
It's sloping up this way, five ten is over here, and five oh four is at the bottom.
So still about six feet?
Yeah, it's just following the road grade.
And the second question, I, is there a landscaper that's going to be speaking today or no? Because if there is not, then I can, this question is probably for you then. Because the, the rendering here, the, I know it's just a idea, but it doesn't actually match what's here with the retaining wall. So, the way you have the two walls, one's a little bit inside, the other one shorter.
I'm just gonna flip it around, because I had it clipped, I didn't like, sorry, Andrew.
It's all right. Just so it's oriented the same way.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if it's not the same, we'll make it consistent.
No, I mean, it, 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 it looks like it's the same, yeah.
Yeah, like-
So the black, the black line-
There's like a little bump out, and there's some things there that look like they might be a little bit different, so I'm just wondering how-
This is meant to be-
The black line is these white lines that are there.
But John Linson really, there will be a landscape plan, if that would be approved by John Linson.
What are the black lines?
That's what we were just discussing, sorry.
I, I'm not sure what that is.
That's not part of this.
Yeah, I'm not sure what those darker lines are, that are sort of-
I think it's a shadow.
White, the white line inside where you transition, you have like, say, on the bottom center, there's three shrubs, and there's sort of like a little white, what is that? Is that some kind of stonework, is that?
Um, I'm sorry, are you talking about this?
Me like right in here?
No. Right, all of here, you have a very fine white line here that is not showing up on our plans, right? Between these trees right here, what is that?
Sam, can you zoom in on that a little bit?
I think that's just a delineator on the, on the-
Yeah.
Presentation between where the lawn is and mulch beds, landscape mulch beds. I don't think there's a hard feature that's going in there, to my knowledge.
I have a feeling we need a better drawing than we've got. And, uh, we're gonna need to, uh, if we're gonna do that as a condition, we're gonna need to know who's going to approve it.
Well, is, is the, is the testimony that the walls, whatever the final landscape design is, the walls are gonna be as shown on your plan, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
So that-
Yeah, I think that was the intent and, and-
The landscape plan would make it consistent with Andrew's plan.
So the landscape plans would be just have to fit the walls as along the lines?
Yes.
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 To the extent they don't already match, yes.
You come in, right?
Yeah, you are still, you're under oath, so go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I think maybe we're just arguing over the difference in the colors of the diagram. So the large, heavy black lines on the Andrew's survey diagram are equivalent to the large, bold white lines on the landscape rendering. The very fine white line is just the edge between the grass and mulch, it's literally just the rendering software. So similarly between, like, if I could point, so like, these little white-
Borrow his microphone, would you please?
Like, these little white lines are not any sort of hardscape feature, they're just, I think, trying to delineate the difference between mulch and grass. And these lines, I think, here, here, and at the top, where the, uh, front walls are, are the large format black lines on, on the drawing. I just, I wanna make sure we're-
Do you know what-
Relatively, they should be in line, and this was actually built on the same CAD drawing as, as the other.
So the landscaping, so the landscaping plan that you've just agreed to is going to match Mr. Clark's drawing and will be submitted for the approval of Mr. Linson and Ms. Rafae.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yes.
Correct.
Just so I ask one question about that, I, I can't see the landscaping plan very well from here. Mr. Linson did highlight the possibility, the hope of saving this red oak tree. Do you know if this plan tries to save that, or?
It does not, um, but the, I think John Linson would still have to approve whatever plan we put in front of him. So the, the walls may have to move a little bit if John Linson requires that.
Where is the red oak?
Yeah, could you point it out?
It's to the left of the walk, um, you can kind of see it, I have X's between it, it's like a twin, a twin oak. So we'll have to meet with John and discuss, you know, the, what the best way to, to handle that is, how far away we should stay, um, whether it's healthy enough, all those things. So, so we certainly will consult with him on that, and if he feels strongly that it should be saved, then there, I think there's ways to do that.
Okay.
I have a few questions, um, and I think then, um, following Ms. An's, um, example, I'll start in the front yard as well. I was on the property this afternoon in the rain, there was water pooling in the front yard. Um, is the terracing and landscaping going- Is the terracing and landscaping going to prevent that going forward or do you anticipate needing some sort of stormwater management in the front?
No, I, I think that the terracing should address that fundamentally in two ways. One is that we'll have a little adjustment to the grades in the front as a result. And, and I do recognize that with some of the contouring that I've shown there to sort of steer some of that water, so it's not going in the front door. But also the leveling of that and the planting beds will actually absorb a lot of the water that you probably witnessed today. Probably, once that's done, you wouldn't even see any ponding at the bottom.
Okay. And then as to the steep slopes, you are disturbing in the front. Do you have an opinion as to whether they were created exacerbated when the road was originally put in and creating some terracing? I know it's been decades.
Yeah, I mean, that would be conjecture on my part. Because I'm, I'm getting older, but I'm not that old. But, you know, it probably did have something to do with it, the combination of the road construction and then, you know, building a house and keeping it sort of closer to the road rather than down the hill. And then what do you do with the bit in the middle, you know, is to keep it from coming right to your front door, you level that off a bit and then leave a slope closer to the road. So I imagine that's probably part of what played into it.
This is not, this is not the only house with that.
No.
Topography.
It's actually a very consistent theme on this side of Oak Ridge up there.
Then moving to the backyard, you're talking about the, the san, the prior sanitary sewer being way too close to the surface. Once the, if, assuming we grant the easement and the lot is leveled, how, how far buried will the sewer be?
So it'll go from, like, in this area, right by that circular patio was where the least cover was. And it was, you know, a little over a foot of cover there. In that location, we have the 493, which is sitting on the 489. So it's going to be three or four feet higher. So you're going to have, you know, four feet of cover over that pipe there, which is much more desirable.
Okay, great. Then Mr. Steiner, am I allowed to ask our experts a question?
You can ask anybody any question you want. Tonight, I don't, go for it.
Thank you.
It's your last one.
And I don't even get to vote. Ms. Rafay, in your memo, paragraph 17, you talk about the need to bring in quantity of soil to level all this. And then paragraph 25, I know exists in every memo of yours I've ever seen, saying that the applicant has to remove the soil that they dug up. Do they really have to do both?
Well, I don't think they're going to be removing any soil that they're digging up. I think they're just importing it to, to bring it up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an unusual condition because typically for that type of comment, it's because you're building a new house and you're digging out a whole basement and they don't, you know, I think that's discouraging, the idea of just sort of spreading the soil around willy-nilly and.
And then changing your.
I had a neighbor with a big pile of dirt in his backyard for 50 years, yeah.
If, if we were filling and this was a new house, then yeah, we would be using that material as long as it wasn't, you know, adverse material.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, one more question.
Go ahead.
I want to make sure I understand the, the steep slope numbers. So it looks like the total steep, steep slope disturbance is 3,600 feet.
Right.
Some of which was previously disturbed by the city.
Right.
How much, how much steep slope is this project going to disturb and how much of the, what the city prior disturbance is?
It's about half and half, so about 1,800 square feet from the city disturbance and then 1,800 square feet on, you know, the front and side.
But you're not, and I know re-disturbing is the right word, are you re-disturbing any of the city disturbance or?
Well, to the extent that some of that's now going to get graded out and fill, place, yes.
It has to be fixed still, right? It was kind of left disturbed.
So they'll be, it'll be disturbed in, in the course of placing fill and then, and then landscaped.
But it's about 1,800 feet of new disturbance.
Right.
Yeah.
And then that 1,800 roughly, what percentage is that of the overall site?
So of the overall property?
Yes.
So the property is 31,000 square feet?
Six percent. So 5.7%.
Yeah. Who's counting? Plus or minus.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a stupid question, only because I've dealt with them before. The County of Union doesn't always respond to things or look at things as quickly as they might. Have we looked at the adjoining property to see if we're affecting it in any way?
You mean.
This whole area below in the back is owned by the County of Union Recreation. Do we affect them in any way?
Well, any of that would be, you know, they're, they have to stay on their property for the work that they're doing. There is that overflow that comes off of the seepage pit, but it comes to the, the upper wall. And that's in the event that there is a, a huge rainstorm and.
Which we seem to get every other day.
Understood, but understood, they are, you know, they are, you know, they're required to put in some overflow. You know, I, I would think that maybe if you wanted to mitigate that, you could just have him do an overflow right at the seepage pit instead of bringing it out to the property that's behind.
Mr. Clark, your thoughts?
I mean, you could do that. I, I think this is going to be more than adequate and have almost never an impact, very infrequently would you get an overflow condition. I know, you know, notwithstanding the, not sure how, how honest you were about your comment about the rainfalls, but we have only had one event that passed three inches this year, and that was four inches of rain.
Okay.
And the county did receive notice.
Typically, typically, we hit two to four times a year, we get to a three-inch rainfall. And, and you'd have to get above that three-inch rainfall to get an overflow effect. So I think it's going to be very occasional and what's, what's down here is just woods all the way down to Glen Side.
Okay. At least nobody can say we didn't consider our friends at the county.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Related to the sewer that was replaced. So, you know, given that this is being replaced to, by current standards, I mean, you know, they're, they're using different kind of pipe and everything, do we have any information on the city in terms of what depth they installed this pipe or what slope? Because when it comes off the property, there's a steep drop-off, right? It's like a drop, you know, it's going to, they actually could pitch, have, they could have sunk that pipe less than 12 inches below grade? My, my question is, did they put it lower, like to whatever?
I don't think they.
Don't we have to worry about freezing or do we have any information about where it sits?
I, I think they were, I think they were pretty well restricted by the manholes on either end. So those manholes are there. And, and what happens is this, this sanitary line comes down the backyards of a number of properties on Oak Ridge, and then it angles across because it, it couldn't go this way because the grade drops off so much. And this comes up to here and then angles across this way. So, so this has been in place for a long time and then the manholes on either end then serve as a control. So they didn't change the, the fundamental pitch or, or vertical location of that pipe, they just built a new one.
So it's not dropping down the hill, it's actually serving, sort of connecting the backyard.
It's flowing down this way, but it's at like a half a percent.
Because you can move the manhole.
Three tenths of a percent. It's, 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 sanitary sewers are definitely not as steeply pitched as storm drains would be. But they're also PVC and they, they flow a lot more frequently and, and better than stormwater sometimes does. And there's not debris getting in there and things blocking it. The blockages are probably from age and trees and infiltration and the old pipe systems that were there.
Just one more question. We're not for the sewer line disturbance. The 1,800 square feet, even if this were a 15,000 square foot property, R15, you wouldn't require variance because then it would be.
Well, if, if we were disturbing it, we would.
Just the front, no, I'm talking about, not this, not where the, the rear yard.
Well, yeah, and the front, probably not, if we were just disturbing the front. If it's, if it's under 1,000 square feet, the city has the, they may grant a waiver in those cases.
Okay. Thanks.
Additional questions?
I just have a couple.
Chairman Steiner?
The proposed walk in the front, we're concerned about the, the sloppiness or steepness of the driveway, but yet we're proposing a walk right at the bottom of that slope?
Well, yeah, because, because.
Off the driveway?
What, you're coming, you're coming down steps and then to a pretty level walk to the front door.
I'm talking about the driveway, the proposed walk.
Well, yeah, because, you know, the, the homeowners at, at different times may need to drop somebody off at the front door, or grandma's coming for Christmas and you're going to stop and let her out and have the level walk to the front door instead of navigating the stairs or the driveway.
There, there are currently stairs in the front yard now, right?
Well, they're not there now, but there, there were some stairs.
They were, yeah.
Close to the driveway over there.
Question here, between these two manholes, I see that the invert on the first one here is higher than the others, so the flow is in the other direction, isn't it?
No, the invert, it's, it's kind of cut off a little bit, but the invert here in the back left.
490?
Is 488. The 490 is the rim, that's the top of it.
Okay, and the other one?
488.3 is the invert and the 487.3 is the invert on the other manhole. So it's, comes down a foot across that whole distance.
Whole distance? Okay, thank you.
All right, just one more.
Yeah.
So with the original retaining wall, was there a plan already to, to level off the backyard with the original retaining wall or the one that was installed?
Not to this extent. So there was, there was some re-grading, but we were tying back in to not disturb that steep slope area. So we were lifting that up a little bit and getting a little better pitch in the back, but not, not as, as significant as what this will accomplish.
Could the city have done its work without disturbing steep slopes?
No.
No.
Okay. I wondered whether or not, so do we hold the property owner responsible for the city's disturbance? Or do we just calculate based on their disturbance?
Well, if they're filling the.
Well, we're dropping a drywall there now and we have to finish, now it's been started, right? It's still disturbed. To fix that area now and, and fix the grade in that area, they, they need to re-disturb it.
They're disturbing it.
Technically. I would rather you calculate it so we don't have to come back.
I'm not worried about finishing it, I'm wondering whether or not we hold them responsible for it.
But I appreciate.
The answer is no. But the answer is we're going to.
No, but yes.
Please.
Chairman Steiner, one more question. So if I heard you correctly, when the, I guess the title agency or the original survey didn't have, did not have the sewer line on the.
That's correct.
So that.
Wasn't shown on the, on the survey, that's right.
Okay, that's kind of weird.
And I happen to have the record next door, once this all came up, I pulled out my, an old survey my uncle had done of this and went, oh, you know what, there is a manhole there. And it actually, it's a weird condition, it sort of cuts under the sewer line there, cuts underneath this addition that's supported by posts back there and.
So the house is, this structure sewer line goes to the street or goes back to?
No, no, it comes here and then it goes back this way and then, and then a little farther down.
So the house is connected to this?
Yes.
All the houses along Oak Ridge, right?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, because they're, because of the.
The pitch.
Because of the road and then they're down lower, they couldn't really get to the street with the sewer, so that's why these are all running the back. And I've run into it on a couple of these other properties where they were getting a variance for one reason or another. And the same type of request was like, look, we know the sewer's here, but it was never committed to a, an easement for the whole length of it. So it's been, it's been getting accomplished piecemeal as you go along.
Any other questions? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public for this witness? No questions? Okay, thank you. Do you have any other witnesses?
You have a full house. For efficiency, I think we can move forward if you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
If you're ready, I think we can proceed.
Waiting for you.
With the vote.
I think you want to do a closing statement.
Any closing statement or would you like us to just proceed?
I, I think we can go ahead, I think we have a couple of conditions, right?
I'll get to the conditions, okay? Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this particular? This is the time where you get to say whether you like it or don't, before we were asking questions of Mr. Clark. Anybody have anything that they would like to say about this particular? Seeing none, and with you on understanding that you don't have a closing statement, we will go ahead and ask our attorney to provide us with the conditions and the number of votes required.
Yep, so we have two conditions. One, our usual compliance with those conditions noted in the Board Engineers memorandum. And the second is that the applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan to be consistent with the proposed site plan to the City Forester and Board Engineer for review and approval. And we're only talking about a single C variance for steep slope disturbance, so four votes are required to approve.
Okay, we now move into executive session, which is where we talk about it, make, make our positions in discussion, and then we will be voting. Who would like to start? Miriam, you've got it. You knew I was going to do that.
Somebody has to start. I can, I think, I can support this application. I, I do feel that, you know, there are some appropriate times for a steep slope variance and particularly in the front yard, I think that's, that's a big part of it. If you didn't have that front yard part of it, the part you're doing in the backyard, you know, the city part, we understand, and the little tiny part by the pool is insignificant compared to the 1,000 square feet or so that you're doing in the front to make that basically a safer access way to the house. I, you know, as long as all the other conditions are met, I can, I can support this.
Yeah, I, I can support it as well, too. I think in the context of the property and Oak Ridge, you know, we've got a lot of steep slope applications on Oak Ridge over the years I've been here. It's a reasonable, reasonable steep slope application. I, I, I'm putting a lot of faith in John Linsen reviewing the landscape plan because that was one of my concerns or so, but I think we all trust John Linsen. And they seem to be managing this deep slope, whatever the impact is, they seem to be handling it well with the applications I can support as well.
Don, you look pensive. Don?
Oh, no, no. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're handling the steep slope, you know, the city had to do their thing in the backyard, so it is what it is. And, you know, while the front yard has its challenges, it's going to be much of an improvement for that part of the steep slope, so I can support this application.
Okay, there, it looks like we are looking at an application that is A, fixing something the city started and now we have to get it finished. And the applicants have provided a decent plan to do that. Water is being helped, which takes care of working with the positive criteria and knowing that we will hopefully have a better property. Also, I see no negatives to any neighboring properties and they did indicate that they have talked to neighboring property owners and that there are no issues for them. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second? Is there a second?
No second.
May we have a roll call?
Sure. Vice Chairman Lloydkitts?
Yes.
Mr. Yucco?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mr. Malai?
Yes.
Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I'll do the usual reminder to follow the resolution, which comes in about a month. Let us check in on 29 Ridge Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Weber of Alfonso and Weber, we have been able to reach an accommodation with the reach an accommodation with the glass fans and achieve a result that I think the board will find favorable in connection with the application that began back on April 29th.
Okay, so then we will call that case to order at this point, which is the first item on our agenda, which is Alina Holdings, 29 Ridge Road, and actually, a couple of people have said to me, it's time for a little five-minute break, so we will go ahead and do that, we'll be back at ten to nine.
Their property line. Those changes have just been completed tonight. And basically, what they're talking about going from the southeast corner of the driveway, which was proposed at eight feet off the property line, will be 11 feet off the property line. The Norway spruce, the one Norway spruce that they wanted kept, which is the tallest one, and it was number 28, by the way, on the inventory. That's going to be preserved, and that's going to be protected from the grade change by having a boulder wall rather than a continuous retaining wall five feet off the property line. That boulder wall is going to be set approximately 22 feet off the property line, so it will be well back off the common property line. Likewise, there will be an adjustment in order to allow for that boulder wall to be set back even for additional properties, and those are for trees known as 60 and 59. And those were the ones, the black cherry, and there was an oak that was between the property line and the proposed retaining wall. We're going to have the continuation of that boulder wall wrap around in order to preserve those as well. There's also two beeches that even though they're suffering from the beech leaf disease, there's the desire to be able to continue the canopy on behalf of the glass fans so that they still have that green that they're looking for. Those two trees were shown as, I think it would be numbers 11, 11 and 12, thank you, Ms. Brennan. And what's going to happen there, they're too far in to be able to move the boulder wall, so it'll be an adjustment in the grade in order to make the best efforts possible in the grade plan for the backyard. Likewise, as we get to what I have called the panhandle, a number of trees will be retained. That's shown and listed on this document that's been reviewed by the map and by the glass fans, and they find it acceptable. So if the board would permit, I would ask that this be introduced as a joint exhibit. It would be J1.
Okay.
Now, because this is going on here at the 11th hour, Marie Raffaie has not had an opportunity to review it in detail. And likewise, we'll need Andrew Clark to prepare a civil engineering plan incorporating what's been marked as J1. In that regard, because this is an application that began and was declared complete on or about April 29th, this is our third hearing, we would ask the board to consider conditioning its approval, if it votes an approval on the application, to having the engineering plans incorporate this accommodation between the glass fans and the applicant, and also have the city forester take a look at it as well.
Do we have any questions from our professionals?
So it's true, I have not had a chance to really review this. We just kind of looked at it quickly, but we could make it as a condition of approval that I could look at that. One other thing that I wanted to ask was, and maybe this is not for you, but this might be for Mr. Clark. If it's required to have a new soil permit done with soil conservation, would you be willing to do an updated permit to soil conservation?
Yes. I mean, if it's required, happy to do that.
Okay. That's all I have at this time.
Tom?
Sure. I'll just acknowledge the letter that was submitted by the city zoning officer, the opportunity to speak with Roger while this issue is being reviewed internally, and we came to a consensus with regard to the analysis of the height. So I agree with what's written in this letter with regard to what's permitted. The applicant's proposing a building height of 37.9 feet or 38 feet would be permitted in this case.
Okay.
Based on your orders.
All right. Questions from the board?
Yeah, the building height. So my que-- the reason I ask that is because when you're at the back of the house, it's the garage is a full height, right? So it's essentially four stories plus roof. I know it's three and a half, but that half story, assuming it's seven feet, right? And then there's a roof above it. It does seem like potentially, so is there, you know, is there going to be an as-built, you know, elevation provided to make sure that there isn't a height variance required for that, this? Because I know what it, I know what the plans say, but we all know that things don't always get built exactly to the plans, and especially with all the changes proposed here for elevations, it just seems like it would be appropriate to have a height on this to make sure that a variance isn't required for that as well. Because it is pretty close.
Is that a problem for the applicant?
No objection.
So that'll be a condition of--
As condition of approval and as-built survey. Thank you, Ms. Zahn.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, we've seen enough of these cases where we do corrections instead of approvals. Okay. Anything else? Board members, questions?
I have just one.
Go ahead.
It might be addressed on this plan, but you're reconfiguring the drywells, I guess they are.
That would be part of the stormwater management. It still believe that there will be a substantial increase over that which is permitted.
I just, I don't know if you would, is that going to change the collection of the runoff from the driveway? Because that's not, it's not Andrew. I'm being a little picky, but I guess the engineer would pick that up.
Hey, well, one of the points, and thank you, Mr. Nelson, one of the points that the glass fans also wanted was a swale where the retaining wall was originally, so that the water would then be collected. And that's, we've spoken with Mr. Clark about that. Any things from an engineering standpoint, he can work with that.
Yes, and anything will run that way, will be caught by the drains--
Is that something you're adding to this? Or is it on there?
Yeah, it was in there as well.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Any other questions from board members? Any questions from the public for the attorney relative to J1? That's, I guess, the best way to put it. I don't see any questions for you. The next process part of this, I'm trying to figure out where we are on this.
We haven't seen J1 just before--
Please, please.
--where we get to the next step, make sure--
Please, everybody take some time and take a look at it. I mean, we're all, we're basically being asked to accept it with the knowledge that our experts are going to either approve it or send it back to us. I think that's the right term. If they don't agree with what's there, it will be back here and we'll have another hearing, Did you guys get a chance to see it down here, or did you just pass through?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody got a chance.
We may want to just open it up for public final comment.
Okay, we can do that. At this point, we would open the floor for any public comments on the entire application. This is your opportunity to tell us what you think about this application, positive or negative. Seeing none, I would ask both of the attorneys if they wish to make a closing statement. As we do have two attorneys, and let's put it on the record that--
The point that I would make, Mr. Chairman, I think Dennis Galvin, one of the board's more recent applications, said it best. He said, "When you're looking at the steep slope, look at three points. Is it aesthetically attractive? Number two, do you stabilize the steep slopes? And number three, do you manage the stormwater?" And in this application, all three of those points have been met. In addition, when we talk about the fact that we're improving safety for pedestrians on Ridge and on Fernwood, we have an extensive landscape plan that has met with the approval of John Linton, where he recommends approval for this landscape plan. So this is an application that, as the board has seen, has gone through changes, has responded to the concerns of the board's experts, the neighbors, both sides, and is therefore presented to the board for its approval.
Okay. Can we move on to conditions of approval and number of votes before we move into executive session?
Absolutely. So I have a few conditions here. Looks like six total. First, compliance with those conditions noted in our board engineer's memorandum. Second, the board shall retain landscaping jurisdiction for a period of two years after the completion of landscaping. Third, the applicant shall perform tree replacement in accordance with the requirements of the city tree removal ordinance and subject to the review and approval of the city forester. Fourth, the applicant shall utilize their best efforts to maintain screening along the property boundaries until the point where new plantings are ready. Fifth, the applicant shall revise their engineering plans to reflect the accommodation in joint exhibit J1 and submit it to the board engineer for review and approval. And sixth, and finally, the applicant shall submit as-built survey with topography to the board engineer for review and approval. I'll just note that the first three conditions were from the September hearing. The fourth was from our most recent December hearing, and the final two are from this evening. It's only, once again, a single steep slope ordinance. Four votes are required to approve it.
Doesn't the, doesn't the J1 also go to the, go to Mr. Linton?
Yes. Yep. Board engineer and city forester, I neglected to mention that.
Okay, because I thought I, I tried.
Topo, we should have, the building, I mean, that's not always on a topo, the building height, but that's like, survey the building height, right? Just in the condition, because it's not really just a topo is not necessarily going to tell you that. They don't usually put the height of the building on it.
Very good.
Mr. Clark?
Agreed.
Right, I know, but in the, I'm saying, in the, in the conditions, it just stating the building height.
Topography and building height.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's see it in the resolution, I guarantee. Okay. We are now moving into executive session where we discuss the application and vote. Who might like to start? Mr. Chairman of the--
Is that an official title?
It is.
I believe Mr. Weber said it best when he was quoting Mr. Galvin. The positive criteria here is pretty obvious. With the improvements to the stormwater, there's an obvious benefit, and I think the applicant's willingness to work with their neighbors speaks volumes about their desire to come to a positive resolution for this situation, so with that, I can be in full support.
Ms. Chifo?
I agree. It wasn't until the neighbors that on Fernwood came, you know, met with the lawyers and discussed and came up with the resolution that I feel that this is, this moved in the right direction.
Ms. Zahn?
I think I'm in a similar, a similar mindset as Ms. Chifo. I think the one thing that, you know, I, when, when I see these steep slope applications for something like this where really it's mostly to level a backyard, the concern I have is that Summit is going to look like a Minecraft, something out of Minecraft, because we are, we are on a hill. Everybody's property, not everybody, but a lot of properties are sloped, and the purpose of zoning is not to give people a flat backyard. There are other purposes. And even if there aren't detriments by giving, you know, to the neighbors and all of that, it's not, it's not the purpose of zoning. So for me, this is like, it's tricky, because I, I can see where there's positive criteria, but I also see this as one that is, it's like a nice-to-have, but not, not necessarily necessary. However, if it, if there are more trees being retained, I think the one thing that I, from the September 16th meeting, which I had the pleasure of re-listening to, three hours worth of testimony, the shade tree advisory, you know, they made a pretty strong statement about that this project, you know, building the house doesn't necessitate the removal of all of these trees, and I thought that was pretty compelling. It kind of speaks to some of the negatives, right? Some of the healthy trees that were being removed. So I am, I think I could reluctantly support this with the understanding that there's been work made, you know, progress with the neighbors, more trees are being retained, and, you know, obviously the stormwater management to prevent having the runoff to the neighbors, but not an easy one.
Anyone else wish to opine?
Yeah, I, I--
Go ahead.
I would just like to say, yeah, I know that this has been a long, painful process for many of us in this room. And I think that the iterations of this plan that have worked out over the months shows the real value add of the zoning board, that in many instances, we act to make applications better. And I think we've done that job here, so I can support this.
Anyone else? Well, I can tell you that we've obviously changed this application from when it came in. It looks a lot different, and I think that's one of the things that this board does more than anything else, is in order to make sure that the zoning is upheld and the master plan is upheld, that what people come in with doesn't always become what they think it's going to become when they put it in. We change it, we make it better, I think, and we're here, we're taking care of some drainage things, we're taking care of beautification, we're even keeping some trees that we're, that our forester thinks probably won't make it. But we're going to take a shot at it and see if we can make it happen, thanks to the neighbors. And all the neighbors got involved, and that's really important, and I certainly can support because we, we did a lot of work to make sure that this is a better application as it leaves than when it arrived. And I would look for a motion to approve--
Mr. Chairman Steiner, before we go, can I, I wasn't going to say anything, but can I, is it too late for me to say something?
I'm sorry.
Is it too late for me to say something?
Say, go for it.
Okay. There was a comment made earlier tonight that a man's allowed to develop their property, and that's, you know, I agree, I agree with that to a point. That's why we have zoning. You know, you can't build a monstrosity on a small lot. I'm not trying to allude that this is what you're doing by any stretch of the imagination. You are doing a fantastic job, and I'm glad that there is a agreement between the neighbors. But sometimes we have to keep in mind that zoning's here for a reason, and if the zoning says X, we need to remember that's what zoning is. You prefer, you come before this board to get a variance from that X, but sometimes your requirements, again, I'm not saying it's in this case, just in general, some requests are a lot, some are. I think this is probably the third case we've heard since I've been on the board about leveling off a lot in town, and I agree with Ms. Zahn when she said, you know, where do we draw the line? In this case, though, I think, I'm glad there was an agreement between the neighbors, so I'm very happy for that. At least you're smiling now, so that's good. I just, not so much a reflection on the applicant, but I don't, I don't know how to, I'm probably not going to be politically correct here, so forgive me for saying this. Sometimes responses from witnesses can hurt your case. Even though she was supporting people, that, that response, and I've known that young lady for a long time, doesn't really set a good tone, so not, not to penalize you, I can support this application, so I just, I just had to say that, it was bothering me, that's all.
And I'll get back to taking a motion if we can.
Sorry, Chairman Steiner.
Anyone wish to move?
I'll make a motion to, to approve this--
To approve, with conditions and--
With the conditions as listed.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Vice Chairman Moikits?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Malai?
No.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Chifo?
Yes.
Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board.
Okay. We move on to the last case of the evening, 27 Edgar Street. Tom and Michael are back?
Yeah.
And Jay is accusing.
Chairman James First, on behalf of the applicant, 27 Edgar LLC. The LLC is owned by Mr. Jason Caparola. Jason is here in the audience, he's available if the board has any questions of him. For brevity's sake, I didn't intend to call him. I do have three witnesses here available to testify this evening. I have Mr. Clark, who you're familiar with, and hopefully he'll get approved again as an expert. I have Hike Exian as our architect, and we're rounding it out with Mr. Matthew Sekler of Stonefield, who is our planner to address the density variances, which I know is going to be the most concern for all those people who are looking at you who are sitting behind me. Thank you all for your time this evening, much appreciated. The application has a number of variances, most of them related to bulk, some of them related to density. This is a non-conforming sized lot. The, the use, the use, the intention to build a three-unit townhome is allowable under your ordinance, so obviously that is then in compliance with your master plan. What we'll do is have Mr. Clark work through the lot. He understands existing conditions, we understand what's proposed, and obviously, we'll answer any questions that the board and the public may have this evening. So thank you in advance. With that, I call Mr. Clark to testify on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions for the attorney from the board, from the public?
I'm aware that this, this lot is allowed for multiple units, but if we had two units, you want to be here, correct?
I'll leave that to the professionals, sir. I don't do the math on it, I just present the case. You can ask that question to Mr. Clark, and he certainly, I'm sure, will be able to answer it.
The number of variances will be reduced to none.
Again, I don't, I don't know. You can ask that question, absolutely. Mr. Clark heard it, I'm sure he's already preparing mentally an answer for that question when it comes to it. We will certainly address it, Mr. Malai. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public for the attorney? Seeing none, would you go ahead and--
Thank you, Chair.
Move on.
I call Mr. Andrew Clark as my first witness. He's previously been sworn. He was previously qualified as an expert, professional engineer.
He's going to be sworn for this case.
And we are just going to briefly go through this. Mr. Clark, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
It's Andrew Clark, C-L-A-R-K-E.
Thank you. And just noting, as we do, as we did just before this hearing, you were admitted as a professional engineer, just, we do have an audience, I would like you to briefly describe your background and experience for the board, please.
Certainly. I'm a licensed land surveyor and civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Norwich University and a bachelor's degree in land surveying from NJIT. I've been practicing for more than 20 years. Let's just leave it at that. I have appeared most recently in front of this board, of course, Chatham Borough, planning and zoning, mostly zoning, Madison zoning mostly, and occasionally planning board in Madison as well.
Any questions from the board, or would you like to accept him again?
I think we'll accept his credentials and, please, go ahead.
Mr. Clark, do you want to use your board, and I'll try to supplement on the screens?
Yep.
I think that's best. You had a chance to review the property at 27 Edgar Street in Summit. You prepared a survey and a site plan, did you not?
I did.
That site plan, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Ball, was previously provided to the board. That is, describe that for us, so we know which one you're referring to, Mr. Clark, please.
Certainly, I'm referring to the site plan that I prepared dated July 10th, 2024, last revised September 4th, 2024, consisting of three sheets, a title page, the survey, and the site plan.
And in doing so, you prepared the, the data chart there, is that correct?
That's right.
Can you tell the board about the property, about the neighborhood, what exists and what, in essence, is proposed by the applicant, please?
Certainly. So the key map on the front indicates the property with a crosshatch. It's Lot 58 in Block 1302. It's located in the multifamily zone. It's a little hard to read on this print in there, but the, the zone line runs on our left side of our boundary along 59, and then sort of jogs over and includes the apartment complex on the other side of Edgar Street. And then to the left of us is the R15 zone, and--
Which is the high school, correct?
Well, the high school is in the R15 zone, and the neighboring property is to the left of our subject property.
But directly to the rear of the property is the, is the high--
Yeah, directly behind us, the high school, the back right of our property is an apartment complex that fronts on Morris Avenue, and directly across from our entrance is another apartment complex. They may be owned, they may be condos, I'm not sure about the ownership status. And we are located just off of the intersection with Morris Ave, that's on the right edge of that key map sheet. So I, what I'll do is I'll come back to the site data chart, which is on the front, and what I'd like to do is maybe just jump right into the existing conditions and give you a picture of what's out there now in the existing condition. So on the topographic survey page, shows the property, it's an unusual property, it's a bit of a, it's not really a flag lot, it's sort of like a fat flag. So it's got a, it's got the stem coming off of Edgar that's 20 feet wide, and then it widens out to the, to the bulk of the property in the rear. So it's a very unusual property in Summit, I haven't run across too many that, that have this sort of arrangement. So a lot of things about it become unusual, including the bulk standards and how those are applied in this case. But what's existing now is a driveway that comes in off of Edgar Street, and it makes a left turn to a garage, there's an existing dwelling that's on site with a pea gravel patio in the back, in the back left-- In the back left, that Lot 13 is the high school lot, and just off of our boundary there, it's near the athletic fields, one of the, I don't know if it's a practice field or some of the teams play there, but in the back, it's almost, I don't know, I think they're like batting cages or something, it's like part of the athletic facilities that are right there. And then Lot 45, directly behind us to the north, is the, sort of the back end of the apartment complex that fronts on Morris Ave. There's a row of, thick row of arbivites that's in there for screening, and just on the other side of that, there's like an outdoor space that the apartment complex has. That's right kind of where that Lot 45 text is. And then adjacent to our properties out on the front on Edgar Street are residential dwellings. On Edgar, there's sort of a mix of, I think these are both single-family, but there are some multifamily that are on Edgar Street as you head towards Morris Ave on our side of Edgar. The existing topographic conditions are such that you have about a contour 200 out by the road, and then it starts gently sloping down towards our property. So, we have the 199 midway up the driveway, and then makes its way to the 198, which is just to the right of our house. This area in front of the house is very flat, but from the bottom-left of that to the rear-right of that, there is a little bit of fall in there, and there's a little bit of a slope in the back right corner, the print that I have of this got it cut off, but there's about 950 square feet of steep slopes, but it's just barely steep slopes, it's like 15 or 16 percent in there.
None of which will be disturbed, correct?
Well, it'll all be disturbed, it's all part of the application. And in fact eliminated, but theoretically, it's 950 square feet, so in theory, it would be waived under a normal permit process if we weren't seeking variances for other aspects. And there is no significant stormwater management that I was able to detect on-site or observe. The roof leaders discharge at grade and flow overland, the driveway's sort of a mixture of broken pavement and stone. Because it's so flat, there is some areas where water does trap occasionally, I'm sure, during a significant rainfall. And those are the existing conditions. I will skip now to the site plan page and review what's proposed. So, what we're proposing to do is redo the driveway, it's 20 feet wide, I have the driveway scheduled as 18 feet wide in order to allow enough space to build the curving that would frame the driveway on our property. So, there's an 18-foot wide driveway that comes up, and then there's a parking area in front of three townhouse units that are proposed. So, it's a multifamily, three units proposed in a little farther back than the existing dwelling, and associated with each one of them will be a modest patio, just for a little bit of outdoor space. The grading is going to follow the same basic grading, because we don't really have much opportunity to change that, because we're right at the boundaries on the driveway. So, the driveway's going to, just like the existing, slope gently from the street towards the back. We're going to pitch that to a drain in the back right corner of the parking area, we're going to add some parking spaces on the right, and a couple of them on the left, in addition to the garages, that will be one-car garage with each unit. But we're going to drain to the back right to a drain, to a large drywall system that's located in sort of the middle of the parking driveway area here. And that drywall system is designed to pick up the entire roof and all of this pavement, because that's where it ends up draining to. We wouldn't necessarily want to take all of that, but since we don't really have a choice based on the topography, it's all being collected and managed. In terms of the stormwater management, we're increasing the lot coverage by about 3,600 square feet, and we're managing for about 9,300 square feet. So, it's about two and a half times what, you know, a normal permit type of requirement would be for stormwater management. And that's for a number of reasons, one is as a practical measure, just because that's how the site lays out and how the topography sits, and also because we want to make sure that we're not having any sort of negative impact, and in fact, an improvement over the existing condition which has no stormwater management to speak of. So, you know, the only things that aren't being directly captured are the three modest patios, everything else is being managed in the stormwater management system. We'll have three parking spaces to the right, as you pull in the driveway, you turn right, there'll be three spaces, one of which will be handicap, and to the left, there'll be two spaces and an enclosure for garbage and recycling on that left side. Each unit, as I indicated before, has its own one-car garage, so it's not, and there's not enough room to park in front of those garages, so second vehicles or visitors would have to park in the parking spaces that are allocated. We, in laying this out, one of the challenges is the bulk standards for this, so part of it is, what's the front yard? You know, you have this stem that comes up, I think the planning memo treated the front yard setback as from the street out here, I treated it as this line that's farther in, that's 100 feet back. I'm not sure what's right, there maybe isn't a right and wrong in this case, it's because it's so unusual, but the front yard requirement would be 50 feet, and our nearest point of the portico on the left unit there is 40.6, so it's below the 50 feet that's required. And of course, that ends up with the rear yard being non-compliant. We have 10 feet, 16.8, and 17.1, where 35 feet would be required. If you apply 35 and 50, you really don't have a building envelope in this back part, if you applied it from the lines that are 100 feet back. Obviously, if you apply it from here, you do, but that's also unusual, because 50 feet back from the front line is halfway up the driveway, which means, I guess you could put it on the boundary line? So, it's a little bit unusual in that regard, so we kind of cited the building the way it seemed to be best situated, and then the bulk standards fall where they may, as it were, and that's why we have 10 feet and the 16.8 and 17.1 in the back. On the left side, we have 21.6, where 25 is required, and 15 feet on the right, where 25 is required, that's at the back right. Front right is 22.2, so it's closer to that 25 feet. There is some distance between our boundary and the apartment buildings that are here, I didn't survey it, but I could fill that in if it becomes a substantive issue. I think there are about 35 feet setback, so that would put us about 50 feet between the buildings, which is not inconsistent with the position of the houses on Edgar versus the apartment buildings that are behind them. There is a lot of growth in trees along the boundary, which we're not planning to disturb. There's, as I described a moment ago, the thick screening to the outdoor space of the apartment complex in the rear. There's, over here, there isn't screening per se, but there is a fence there, and it's a less utilized, I should say, portion of the high school athletic facilities on Lot 13. And on the left side, in terms of impacts to the neighbors, there's a shed, and it was quite thick in here, and there are a couple of trees just on our neighbor's property that, you know, will be retained, of course. And so, their house sits much farther up, and it's a deeper lot, and the shed is really the closest thing to us there. The Lot 59 has very thick landscaping framing out the rear and the right side, in terms of screening, that's on their property. It's arbivites or hemlocks, I'm not sure what the species are, but it's very thick in here, you couldn't even really see through into their yard from the subject property. And then they have a shed that's on the line near where the garbage enclosure would be. The Lot 57 has a vinyl fence, one of these five or six-foot-high, you know, white vinyl fences framing the backyard. And of course, the applicant would be planning to landscape the property, as any new development would. In the back right, the question about the steep slope area, we are planning to effectively eliminate that steep slope with a wall that's at its highest point, about three and a half feet, framing that back corner to just get a little leveled area in that, behind that right unit. And so, that describes top-level the application and what's being proposed, and I could walk through some of the memos.
And a couple of questions on that. Yeah, there was reference in the engineer's memo to the plan for snow storage or removal, do you believe that there's adequate space on-site?
Yeah.
For your average snowstorm?
The main area would be in front of the garages, and they'll have to stage some of that snow, you know, in the area around the walks, but then the rest of it, there is some space to the left and to the right by the parking areas to stage some snow, but what happens in many instances is when there's not enough room for the snow, the people, folks you're paying to remove the snow, you would have them actually haul it away. That's an increasingly common thing that you find. And of course, we haven't been drilled too badly, I should probably not say that out loud.
Yeah.
By snow in many of these recent winters, so it hasn't been a major factor of late. But that doesn't mean it won't be, or it couldn't be again, and that would be handled by, you know, snow removal, there's space that's there, but when that becomes insufficient, then some will have to be removed.
Okay. And the garbage enclosure, it's the applicant's proposal that there would be cans, or it wouldn't be a dumpster style there, it would just be regular kind of like trash cans, like a single-family might have.
That's correct, yeah, in keeping with Summit's, you know, residential garbage collection, yes.
And I know there was a question about the mailbox, where would the mailbox be located?
Well, I would presume the mailboxes would be right at the front doors.
But if the post office ever went on the street?
Yeah, if the post office would like another arrangement, I'm sure we could accommodate that.
And then as to drainage, I know you mentioned it, but the drainage that you've proposed is adequate to satisfy all or what is required to be dealt with on-site, is that correct?
In my opinion, it's more than adequate, it's going, you know, to a level that should provide a substantial improvement.
And then, you did mention some of the foliage, is there, are there any trees on-site that are going to be removed, or most of the trees going to be maintained?
No, there are not. The trees in this case are primarily around the fringe of the property, so we should be able to conduct any kind of construction for this project without removal of those trees. Unless, there was one tree that Mr. Linson referenced in his memo of review that indicated there was a dead tree on the northerly line over here, I'm not sure exactly which tree he means, but we will meet, would meet with him in the field and determine what that is, and if it's, you know, being recommended to remove, and it's dead, we would take that out.
So, we have no issue meeting with the arborist and addressing any issue that the arborist might feel is appropriate to remove trees, or to add a few if needed, replacement, et cetera?
Chair, for one second, are you agreeing to a condition of a landscaping plan rather than just one specific issue, but I think the forester asked for a landscaping plan.
I don't have a formal landscaping plan, we have a rendering that will show you, in essence, what the proposal is for the landscaping, it's not very complex, we can review that with the architect, and if the Board feels it's insufficient, then perhaps we can supplement that, or if there's a certain style of vegetation that is preferable, we certainly would be open to any suggestion by the Board.
Mr. Linson indicated that the provision of a landscape plan would be helpful, I think what Mr. Yuko is suggesting and asking is whether we'd agree to a condition?
Yes.
To submit to Mr. Linson a landscape plan if approved.
Yes. Thank you. Anything further? I think we have our engineering memo, let me just check.
Yeah, there were a few points on there.
I hit the two highlights I wanted to, the disturbance of the slopes, seepage pits and such. Did we confirm the height of the wall, I think you said three feet?
Yeah, it's about three and a half feet at its highest point.
I know there was a question about fire suppression systems, and whether it would be adequate, so the Board understands it is the applicant's intention to comply with the direction of the Fire Department, and we would have an amendment to our plan to install sprinklers as recommended.
That's right.
Do we talk height?
Should we move to questions from our professionals?
Sure.
Ms. Rafah?
I want to make one clarification, I know Ms. San, you had found an error in my letter about the density, so I want to just correct that, thank you for finding that, that I had incorrectly said what the permitted density was. So, you mentioned that garbage is going to be collected by cans for the residents to take them out to the front street, does somebody come back and take them out individually?
Well, it's my understanding that they would be brought to the street, I'm not fully up on Summit's general garbage collection, but I have seen, while I'm out surveying, I've seen them in collection mode, going onto the property and bringing cans out, so...
The garbage is taken from the rear of the home for garbage, but recycling you bring out front.
Right.
And that's what we intend to do.
Yeah, we would follow whatever the standard protocol is for Summit collection.
Is there enough room behind these homes for the garbage cans? Behind them?
Ah...
Mr. Chairman, I think practically speaking, it would be difficult to have the garbage cans behind the home, which is why we've proposed the closed garbage enclosure, but if the Board wanted us to take a look at that, perhaps we could find a location for that. I just think practically speaking, it might be better to have it in the enclosed area.
Yeah, particularly for the middle unit, who, if they had something out here, they'd have to either come through the house with their cans, or gain access through the neighboring rear yards in order to do that. That's what, that is why we presented the centralized location in the front.
Okay.
Just quickly, I know we have the detail on there, just talk to us about height, I know that was in the engineering plan as to whether we conform with the height requirement.
Yeah, I have, you know, my ordinary analysis for the height, based on the definitions in the zoning ordinance, that's detailed on an inset, but our proposed height is 33.8 feet, so it's a little bit below what, you know, what the permitted 35 feet, and that's for the highest peak, I think one of the other, that is for the highest peak, which is the one on the right, the other two are not quite a foot lower than that, so they're 32 and change in height. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your questioning, though.
That's all right, because that was helpful as well. Can you talk a little bit more about the driveway? I know that you've got a neighbor there on Lot 57 who uses a portion of the driveway, and I think if I'm not, if I'm not wrong, there's a block curb there right now, so you'll take out that block curb?
Yeah, there's a little curbed island on the, I'm referring now to the topographic survey, the existing condition, there's a bit of a curbed island, it's not really landscaped to speak of, but there's a little curbing in the middle, and the neighbor on Lot 57 parks to the right of that. That'll be removed to provide the full 18-foot width.
But then how does the neighbor on Lot 57, where do they park their car then?
Well, there's, there is a detail that there would be enough room on that to allow for a driveway that would accommodate vehicles on their property. By turning the landing where the steps come into that driveway area, you could turn the landing addressing the street, and then, and bring the steps to the street instead of to the side, and then there'd be enough room to park vehicles there.
And the Board should understand that there was no easement, when the title search was done, there was no formalized easement, our understanding from the prior owner, as well as the current owner, is that there is no agreement between them as to the use of that property. So, the applicant is free to do as he pleases, of course, he would agree to work with the neighbor to try to accommodate them, but from the perspective of the Board, we have a 20-foot wide right-of-way, we propose to use 18 feet of that.
So, you're meaning that on Lot 57, they have been using part of your driveway?
That's right.
And at this point, you need that driveway back?
Correct.
And have spoken to...
So, we're not proposing to put a curb right here? So we, we're not proposing to put a curb right here?
You're not?
No.
Okay.
We're going to begin the curb farther back where, where their fence returns to the house. So we were going to start the curb right, right back there and leave that clear.
So, I mean, the way it looks right now, some, some, something has to give, right? Either they have to move their driveway over a little bit more into their property or they're going to encroach on your driveway.
Right. That's right.
It's, and some, I'm just curious what kind of accommodations are being made on either end or conversations have been going on with Lot 57 about the, I don't know. It sounds like it's some historical use that's been going on. And I don't know the legality of all of that, but I'm just trying to make sure that if they park their car the same way they've always done, you don't have enough access back to those units back there.
Or it's certainly constrained out by the road, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I haven't participated in the discussions with the neighbor, so I, I'm not sure how, how far that's advanced.
Do we know how long the neighbor has been utilizing without permission?
From my understanding of the seller, and I did represent the applicant when he purchased the property, the attorney represented to me that it would not meet any type of adverse possession timeframe. We were very thorough on that point before we took to purchase this property. As I said, Mr. Chairman, there is no formal easement. They represented to us specifically that there was no informal or formal agreement between the neighbors. It was a matter of opportunity or, or politeness. But it is our intention to try to accommodate the neighbor. But the reality is, we have 20 feet and we'd like to use all of that 20 feet to, to get our approval before this board.
Okay.
Regardless of what's purchased, regardless of what is built back there, that would still be the intention.
Moving on to finish up with our press.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Sure.
Just to be clear. So what you're saying is Lot 57, they will not be allowed on, on your property any longer? Is that's what you're suggesting?
I don't want to state that specifically because there may be some other accommodation that is made. Perhaps there's a parking space that we give them in the rear. Perhaps there's rear access. Perhaps there's something else. I don't want to say that there's a strict prohibition from parking on our lot. There may be an accommodation made, but for purposes of the board application tonight, it is our intention to take back possession of our lot and this board should review this application that we have the full 20 feet of that driveway access.
But if you give them one of your spots, wouldn't then you have more of a parking, you know, issue?
Again, Ms. Yuko, just to, to specifically answer your question, I do not want to stipulate that we would not provide them some other type of parking accommodation somewhere. There may be some other parking accommodation, as long as it would comply. I don't want to take that off the table and then not be able to later have a conversation with the neighbor if, you know, there is an accommodation that can be made.
Okay.
But it would not affect this board's decision-making process. If we were approved, it would be based on what we've provided to the board and we would be, continue to be in compliance with, with your approval.
All right, so Clark, if I'm wrong, I think if it ends up that you give them one of the spaces, you, you'll then have seven spaces and then you are under, or would you...
No, we'd be compliant. Because we're up, we're plus one right now.
You would be compliant at seven, okay.
Yeah.
But we don't know what they might come to an agreement with, which might have absolutely nothing to do with parking. That's always the possibility.
Why was there not a conversation with the neighbor before coming in here? I mean, this seems like a, a pretty big point to me. I'm, you know, I didn't pick up on that until Ms., Ms. Rafay mentioned that. Like, I mean, I was at the site, but...
It was discussed in the technical review committee.
Yeah, but I guess when you pointed it out, it became clearer.
The applicant did meet with the neighbor.
Correct.
The applicant did meet with the neighbor.
Okay.
There was no accommodation made. There was no agreement made. But the applicant was forthcoming with the neighbor. I believe the neighbor's here. I'm not sure. But no concessions were made. The, it is the applicant's intention to take possession of his full property.
Can you talk about some fencing on the property?
Yeah, the fencing is intended to just give a little privacy to the, to the yard areas for each of the units. So, you know, starting at the front and enclosing there and starting at the front of the right unit and enclosing back to here so that the middle will have fences on either side. They'll probably have to have, you know, some gates in there to allow...
We have an exhibit that enhances that as well.
Yeah, there'll be homeowners association or whatever, some top-level management. So they'll have to have gates so they can access for maintenance. I, I don't know that we've discussed exactly what type of fences yet, but probably more of a privacy fence than the open metal type that we were discussing on a previous application, something to, you know, give some screening.
The architect will testify on that.
I think that's all I had at the moment.
Okay.
Tom?
I'll just run through my memo. Mr. Clark, with regard to the parking requirement, are there any EV spaces required?
Yeah, it's, it's intended to have the garages as EV-ready so that, you know, there'd be, you know, charging units in the garage directly.
I guess just some way to indicate that, that the requirement's being met.
Yes.
The architect will testify on that.
That's the intent, yes.
Moving along, lighting details. Could you please provide an overview of exterior lighting if there is a...
Architect will address that.
Does that decide that they're all building-mounted?
Yes.
Yes.
There are no, there are no freestanding light poles to light the parking area.
Okay. A question that came to me from a concerned neighbor was with regard to the placement of the trash enclosure. And the question was, understanding that it makes sense to be easily accessible, could it be moved perhaps further away from the lot line that it's adjacent to, closer to the interior of the site?
Yeah, I mean, that, we, we could probably, yeah, we could probably modify the design to have the parking spaces shifted and...
Further away from the neighbors, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I think that could be accommodated, sure.
I think further left, okay. And then this, just the issue of the parking. I, I think you guys need to tell us what the solution is so we're not going in circles for meetings. So it's clear that there is an issue and I, I think we need some sort of resolution. And there's probably a few ways to be creative to do it.
Yeah.
But you need to tell us what that, those options are.
With regards to which?
The, the...
Lot 57.
The issue with the parking for the neighbor, right. So understanding that you have rights to use your property, it does seem to create an issue. And in an effort to try to resolve that issue and have an efficient meeting, you should be telling us what the proposal is.
Right. Well, my, my opinion from, from an engineering standpoint is that the most direct path, the simplest thing with the least disruption in general is, as I depict on this plan, is, is right now you have the, the landing come out and then the steps going to the west towards the driveway. I'm just suggesting that the landing be reoriented with the steps headed towards the street. There, there's a walk right here that goes over to the door that's there and there's a door there. So reorient the steps so they're facing the street. And then you have 9.8 feet between the boundary and the landing, which is enough, you know, for a driveway. And then, and then, and then this becomes a driveway.
So I, if I can just piggyback on that, because I, what, I think what's being suggested by Mr. Behrens is that I would like to know, and maybe my colleagues like to know, what the resolution is before we get to the end of this application. Because I think that might impact how we view, maybe have more parking in your space or, you know, that's a very important...
If I can address that, Ms. Yuko. So you had asked me a question. Would we stipulate that we would not allow parking for the neighbor somewhere else on the lot, on the property? I don't want to stipulate to that. It is, it is our intention to take back possession of our lot. And I don't mean to be harsh, but the reality is that it's really the neighbor's issue and that the neighbor is going to need to figure out how to find a solution to where he, she, they are going to park. When Mr. Caparola takes possession of his 20 feet of the driveway, that's his land. So if the neighbor has an issue with that, again, I don't mean to be harsh or blunt, but the reality is it's, it is the neighbor's problem. It's not this board's problem or Mr. Caparola's problem. As I said, there is no formal agreement. There is no easement. The neighbor has no right to be on this lot. Just because it has been that way for some time, again, he needs to find a solution to that. If we can assist in the accommodation of that, we are not opposed to it. But for purposes of this board, this board should consider that that full 20 feet will be ours. And if the neighbor is able to fashion some solution, that's within his rights as his own landowner. If we can collaborate on that and help him, it would not affect our approval today or what we agree to today.
So just to clarify, so that...
Tom, I think we have enough on the record to know that we need to get a solution to this perhaps. But his, his position is, I think the attorney will tell us, is perfectly legal and he has the absolute right to their property.
Oh, I totally agree.
And I think we have to leave it at that for this point because there's a lot more to go. We're sitting here at 10 o'clock. I don't want to carry this if I don't have to, but there are two other witnesses and I don't want to be here till 2:00 in the morning.
But I just want to say that, that, that separate curb is going to be removed and the applicant will, the neighbor will no longer be parked there. That's what...
Correct. The curb will be removed. The applicant will take possession of his property.
Okay.
And so just very briefly, I know we've had a lot of back and forth on this. What they're proposing, as discussed, they don't have adverse possession rights on the property. If that is in fact accurate, the neighbor does not have the ability to, nor does the board have the ability to compel this applicant to provide parking to the neighbor. So that shouldn't weigh in as a negative impact. But I imagine the board's position would be if parking was provided for that neighboring property, it would probably serve as a positive aspect of this application. Okay?
Okay. Any other questions, Tom?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, questions from the board?
Here. As I asked prior to this, and I think he referred to Mr. Clark to answer.
You're going to have to speak up because we're having trouble hearing you.
All right.
At least I am.
You hear me better now? All right.
Mr. Malley, your initial question is going to be answered by the planner.
Well, I, I can weigh in slightly there.
It could be, yeah. All right, I'll wait for the planner.
Okay, if Mr. Clark feels complacent in the question.
The other comment that I made earlier, which I think is relevant to your question, is if you apply 50-foot and 35-foot setbacks at the front and, and the rear, there is no building envelope. So, so to comply with the standards, you can't build a house on that lot.
And let's, let's talk about the variances required. Should I talk to you or to the planner?
Sure, go ahead. Well, yeah. No, I mean, the variances required are for the, well, actually, in the planning review, it doesn't cite the front yard as a variance. I was sort of treating it as a variance because I'm treating the front yard as from this line here. So that would be a variance. The side yards are, are less than 25 feet required and the rear yards are less than the 35 feet required.
But by density?
What's that?
Density. It's a variance.
Well, the density is a variance. That's correct.
And this is a measure of one?
Yeah. And, and that, because density is a variance and because of the nature of that variance, I think the density variance is certainly best addressed by the planner who's done more research on the neighborhood and the characteristics of, of the environment that we're, we're in.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions?
I have a question. As you're aware, garbage stays in the back, stays on the property. Garagemen come in. Recycling has to be brought to the street. It's going from one family to a three-family property. So there'll be three garbage recycling bins that have to be brought to the street. The property, there's really not much room to have three recycling bins towards the, you know, on, on Edgar Street. And people do bring, there's no, there's no, we have no requirement, we have, we have no restrictions on the size of the recycling bins. So people do have large recycling bins. Where are they proposing those are going to be? Where are they going to be not in the way of cars pulling out?
Yeah, obviously we can't leave it right, right at the entrance of the driveway. It would have to be just to one side or the other of that.
Is there any, going to be any sort of area on the side where the, where the recycling bins will be able to be placed so that they're not in the way of the driveway?
Well, I think it'd be placed the same as every other resident on Edgar Street places their cans out in the, by the curb.
But it went from one, it's going from one recycling bin to three. That's my point.
Right.
I think the theory would be that it's on the driveway and they would be stacked in line and that would still give enough room for the car to get by, remembering that we do have 18 feet. If we have the three foot, it's still 15 feet.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Even your largest SUV could...
It's true. There'll be three cans and not one.
Okay.
Unless somebody has a light recycling week.
My other question is for the handicap parking. I'm assuming that's a requirement for, right?
Yeah.
But, I mean, when we get to the architect, the handicap parking is there. All three properties have garage, but it doesn't look like there's any, I mean, I don't know if this is a requirement, but there doesn't look like there's any elevators. It looks as a lot of stairs. So even if you, if you do have some sort of mobility restrictions, those properties don't seem like they're addressing that. There's a parking for the handicap, but that doesn't mean that, right? I mean, that, from what I, I'll ask the architect.
Yeah, I mean, look, I'd be happy to turn it into a conventional spot, but I think the requirements are that we'd have to have at least one handicap spot. The truth is that most of the time, if it's not being used, like, say, there's residents that, that don't require that space, you know, then it's really just the visitors coming by. The truth is, most of the time, the, the mailman or the UPS truck will stop there for two minutes and, and do their thing and, you know, have free access. But, I mean, technically it's a requirement.
It's a technical requirement to have the space, but the buildings do not need to be ADA compliant. That would be something custom that either the builder could make the deal with someone who was moving in or, you know, if someone wanted to retrofit that after it was built or, you know, to accommodate a guest, I think is really probably the reality of what it would be. But I think Mr. Clark's right. It's honestly, it's probably going to be a spot that's completely underutilized and that is there for Uber Eats, the mailman, those kinds of things.
Yeah. And a lot of times handicap spots in, in this type of setting, one of the great advantages is not necessarily someone who's coming in with a wheelchair, but it's someone who has some kind of disability or a limitation and they just don't want to have to park far away from, from the front door of where they're going. And it's sort of like a guarantee that they have a parking spot. That's been my experience anyway with a lot of these types of sites and the, and the handicap spots.
Okay, more questions?
I, I have two questions.
Please.
One is about the trash. And I totally, you know, understand why the neighbors would want the enclosure moved, but practically speaking, that trash and recycling is very far from the residence. I mean, typically, you're, you're not, especially the one furthest to the right. Did you look at any options where maybe you would put the, I guess these are probably condensers in the front?
Those are, yeah, the air conditioner units, yeah.
So, I mean, did you look at any alternatives where maybe the, each unit has its own area to dispose the trash, like next to it enclosed and put the condensers in the back so that they're not having to, like, I'm just imagining, you know, a day like today, you have to bring your trash out and you, that's a pretty far walk for your trash and your recycling in the, in inclement weather. I'd kind of rather have it closer to the house with some kind of enclosure, like having each unit. Have you considered that?
I haven't, but I will.
The second question is related to the parking. So three of the parking spaces are the garage spaces. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
And there is no intention for people to be parking in front of the garage.
That's right.
However, we know that practically speaking, in driveways where people have one-car garage, very often there's going to, there, there may quite well be, you have visitors, you have, you know, more people than your, your building is actually, not just the people who live there, but it's Christmas, it's Hanukkah, it's whatever. You have people coming over and they need to place to park. The, the driveway entrance into these parking spaces is really short. So if a car parks in front of the garage, is there enough room for everybody else to move about and turn around? Because it, it looks to me like you're going to end up with cars parked there.
Well, there's plenty of room to move about, but not if someone's parked in front of the garage. And, and, you know, there, there really isn't enough space to park a vehicle, you know, for any duration of time in front of those garages.
I think that could be made a condition that the homeowners association bylaws would require that there be no parking in front of the garage spaces to alleviate that concern. Because you are correct. It's nature. People are going to do that. They're going to have their bikes and there everything else in their garages and they're going to want to pull up out front, open the garage door and then walk the groceries in and leave the car there. So if the association has a specific prohibition on that, then, you know, others in the association could enforce that. I don't see that a problem as a condition.
Any other questions?
Yeah, of course. How, how big are these units going to be?
The architect will address that.
Okay. And on the, are we allowed one recycle can or two?
I think it's...
At least two. I don't know.
I think it's two.
We have two. We have two.
Yeah. So, I mean, with three units?
That's six.
If everybody has two, that's, that's six recycling.
And how many trash?
Yeah.
Not, not including?
Trash is four.
That's, what is there?
It's a lot of, it's a lot of garbage, yes. Okay. But we'll have to consider that as we move forward. Any other questions?
Just one here.
Yes.
Maybe building off of Mr. Moye's question, you're seeking five variances. Maybe building off of Mr. Moyes' question, you're seeking five variances. Like, if, did you consider two units and not having to have both side yard and density and just looking for two variances? Was that ever part of the considerations?
That's not, that wasn't a consideration brought to me for engineering the project. And I think, my understanding is that there was previously considered four units, which seemed excessive. And I think three units seemed like a better alternative by a long shot, but I didn't, I haven't evaluated two units.
Okay. Any other questions for this witness? Seeing none from the board, any questions from the public for this witness? Questions only. Yes, sir? You have to come up and give us your name and address. Spell your last name.
Okay, I am Carl Dehm. D-E-H-M. I live at 30 Edgar Street, so I'm like diagonally across the street from the proposed building. And I guess, you know, I want to just pick up on the parking question.
Questions, okay. But specific question?
Yes.
Without statements?
Specific question is whether or not they have considered how this is going to impact street parking, because that is a challenge on Edgar Street already.
Okay.
Well, we have parking, we have more than sufficient parking by zoning ordinance for the units that are proposed. In the instance where you have visitors, I imagine it would be like anyone on Edgar Street who has visitors. There aren't many of those properties that have excess parking on site on their properties, so visitors would have to do as any visitors would on, in this neighborhood, and park on the street temporarily while they're visiting. And otherwise, we shouldn't have an impact on the street because we have sufficient parking on site for the residents on site.
Okay. Any other questions from the public for this witness? Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Alexei Birna. I'm-
Your name?
Alexei Birna.
Address?
Alexei Birna. A-L-E-A-X-A-I-B-I-R-N-A. And I'm the owner of the property of 27 Edgar Street. So from where-
You're the neighbor.
So basically, from where, you know, like, they are planning, you know, like, to take the driveway, basically. So I moved, like, I moved to this neighborhood, like, not long ago, so-
This is just for questions only?
No, we need your questions. You have to ask a question. You can't tell us, there'll be a time to tell us.
Okay, okay. Let me go this way. So, we know that, I guess, this question is going to be like for the board or in general, you know, like, so we know that historically, like, this property, it was like, three, like, there were like three family property on the same property, like, sometimes in 1950s, where, you know, like, it was zoned at like as a multifamily. So since then, like, three, three other, like, three separate properties were built, you know, like, and they have been-
We can't, we need a question. We need a question. Let's have that question mark at the end. You can give comments at the end.
Okay. How come, like, did the zoning board, like, think about that? How, like, how we can, like, the multifamily, like, in the historical multifamily, you know, like, now it's still, like, when my, when I bought the property, you know, like, in my plan, it's saying that it's residential. So the same residential property thing on the left side, like the other neighbor, but the property on the back, it's a multifamily. So I guess, like, my question is, this zoning have been reviewed, like, recently, not like to, to make sure that the codes are correct for the property on the back?
It's a big part of what we're doing tonight. Any other questions? Yes. Name and address, please.
Robert Delmonte, D-E-L-M-O-N-T, 32 Edgar. My question is, what is the lot size required for this building?
Well, for the lot size requirement shown, it's a, the minimum lot area is two acres in the multifamily zone.
Two acres?
That's right.
And what is the size of the lot now?
This lot is .3792 acres.
That's like 1/50 size, that's a regular size, regular. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Someone else? Questions?
My name is Deborah Tomasello, T-O-M-A-S-E-L-L-O. I live at 13 Edgar. So, my question is that if these are being owned, let's say, by three separate owners, will they be able to be turned over into rentals? Because currently, there are three condos next to me, 9A, B, and C, and they have, two of them have owners, and one of them, well, two of them have owners, and they rent it out. So whoever owns those units beside me, which are condos, none of the owners live there. They're all rentals, so there's not a lot of control over it and maintenance over it.
Okay. So the question is, what's the, how's the, what's the ownership going to be?
And briefly, I'll just chime in that the board cannot restrict the rental of properties. That would be something up to the HOA, but I imagine counsel can give-
It's the intention of the property owner to sell the three units, and thereafter, as happens, happens. I don't think we could put a restriction on this that no one would ever rent these properties. I think it's contrary to law.
Correct.
Any other questions?
My name is Olga Krasotkina, K-R-A-S-O-T-K-I-N-A. I live 412 Morris Avenue, apartment 55. I have a question to witnesses. Actually, I live at apartment complex, right behind, yeah, no, there.
In the back, behind the site?
Yeah. How do you address elevation between lots? Because right now, this is natural drainage, like, most of the lot is alone. It provides natural drainage for the water, for the rainwater, and some water ended up on the 412 lot. And it's pretty wet right now. You can go and check, right, right there. It's like, pretty wet. It's like, you can, you can step there. And right, as I understand, the most of the lot will be paved-
You're saying this property or your, or the apartment property?
This is the elevation, like, this-
Yeah, it does. It slopes back, you know, behind that existing house. It slopes down towards that patio area, that outdoor area.
And most of the lot will be paved. So there's no natural drainage there, and how do you address this possible-
Right. So the stormwater management system that's proposed is going to take the roof area from this entire three units. And it's a drywell system. I don't know if you know what that is, but basically, a drywell system is you dig a giant hole.
Yeah, I know. We have such units in our parking lots as well, but it's not about only roof.
No, it's not. I just wasn't sure if you knew what a drywell system, that's all. I was going to explain that if you were here.
Yeah, because right now, that changed our, like, drainage system, so I know-
Right. So this is designed to take the entire roof and the entire driveway and parking area, so all of that paved area in total is going to be managed in this four-tank system that's proposed in the front.
And what about elevation? What about elevation?
Well, what we're doing in the back here is we're planning to just sort of frame that corner with a three-and-a-half-foot-high wall and level off the yard back here. So that would help a bit with, you know, water that's running down that slope, because it's going to flatten it out, so, and there'll be landscaping, so it'll have a chance, rainwater that falls in behind the building in this area in here would have a chance to infiltrate into the landscaping and the lawn, and there'll be less runoff generally from the site because we're going to be managing all that hard paved surfaces in the roof area.
Okay.
So what you're saying is that there will be no additional runoff to the neighboring property from you?
That's correct. Should be less runoff.
That's what I think she's asking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
And asking a different way. What is currently uncontrolled will be controlled, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions for this witness? Okay. Looking, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, did not see you. Please. Again, questions.
Hi, Jessica Gutman, 29 Edgar Street, directly in front of this property. So I have a couple of questions, but I'll stick to one right now, piggybacking on that previous question. You said it'll be, the lot will be leveled off so that there's less runoff behind the property. I live in front of the property.
Right.
We already have a-
In this house?
Huge, yes. We already have a huge seepage issue. It sounds to me like what you're proposing is to take all of that water from your roofline and put it in the drywells, but those drywells are still in the ground, seeping water into the ground. And I feel like we have quite a high water table already. Has anybody actually, an engineer or some sort of-
Well, I haven't dug any holes out there yet. I mean, I could probably contact the folks who just did the giant fields with the stormwater system for the high school that's right next door. They probably have a really good idea what the soils are like there, since they just built that whole system.
Okay. I mean, as your neighbors-
And of course, a hole would be dug at some point with soil testing done. That's correct.
And I assume that there's going to be a gigantic amount of excavation for a project such as this.
Well, I don't know. I mean, to me, it's not gigantic. It's kind of ordinary in terms of construction, but it might seem gigantic to someone who isn't-
It might be ordinary in terms of construction. I mean, the fact that you're having trouble with the setbacks because the project is so large speaks to how large it is for this community. But the amount, just talking about the water, the amount of water that you're projecting to go into these drywells and then seep into the soil at a rate we don't understand yet, could directly impact my house, at least as far as I know. We already have a drainage problem, a seepage problem, a water table problem. Now we have three additional households, more sewage, more water usage, drywells, excavation. How do you plan on addressing that with people like me?
Well, I mean, relative to your property, if you're in Lot 59 right here, my opinion would be that you wouldn't be affected by any of that on our property because you're actually up a bit. There's a wall along the side, and your house sits up from us. And the drywell system would begin at the grade that's already lower than where you are, and then go down like nine feet, nine or 10 feet. So water doesn't go sideways in those systems. It infiltrates down, maybe at a slight angle, but it shouldn't affect your property at all, given the position and-
Would it be appropriate that we would consider maintaining drainage jurisdiction for two years, which is a pretty standard condition that we use around here a lot? And if we did that, then if there were a problem in the first two years, you would be able to go to them and get them to fix it, or if they don't, you go to SULIO's, who then takes whatever appropriate action the city deems necessary in order to solve the problem. Is that acceptable to-
Counsel, any objection to imposing that as a condition?
I see no objection to that.
Counsel.
Condition.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about that.
Yes.
Because this is proposed as a multifamily dwelling, is this joint and severable? How do you, how do you enforce this? Let's say that the person at 29 Edgar is experiencing something that is unforeseen, and, you know, you're not expecting it, but perhaps, these units are now sold, right? So you're no longer going to, you know, Mr. Clark, you're not going to the attorney. Who do we go to? Are those three property, how are those property owners, how are they held accountable?
I believe the intention is to create an HOA, correct?
Correct.
So then what we would do is we would impose that drainage jurisdiction upon the HOA.
And the reality is, if the HOA didn't do anything in the first year, is the first thing they're going to do is file a lawsuit against my client.
So is there, your intent is to form an HOA, but is that a def, like, is that mandated in your, in your proposal here? Like, is that a condition?
These will not be simple ownership lots. They're not going to be subdivided lots. So as I understand it, and if we want it as a stipulation, HOA is going to be an obligation of the owner. So if we want to make that an obligation in this application, it's no question.
We can add that to this condition.
And then the way I understand it, then, correct me if I'm wrong, so the impetus, if there were to be damage to my property for some unforeseen drainage issue from your property, then the impetus would be on me to address it with the homeowners post-damage and try to get some sort of reparations.
Right. That's the first thing. And if that doesn't work, you go to the city. And it has worked in the past. It has been a successful way of handling these issues.
I'll withhold other questions until later.
I know. Okay. And, yes.
My name is Catherine Rubinstein, R-U-B-I-N-S-H-T-E-Y-N. Catherine was a K. I live at 35 Edgar Street. I have a public safety and community impact kind of question. I guess, do you guys have information how wide Edgar Street is compared to other streets in Summit?
Do you know how wide Edgar Street is?
And you can, you can take your time.
I don't have a scale on me, but I don't, you, oh, look at that.
I come with my ruler.
You never know what you're going to get here.
It says 40-foot by 20.
Mr. Clark without a scale?
Yeah, it's inches. It's not, it's not a 20 or 30.
This is an architect's scale, so-
But it has inches on it. You'll get, you can use inches.
There's a P. So it's inch and a quarter. So, yeah, it's about 24 feet.
Is that a normal, regular size, I guess?
That's, you know, roadways vary. 24 is pretty standard, though. 24 would be a standard width. They're usually between 24 and 30 feet pavement width, depending upon the road and the, how well-traveled it is. And, you know, this is a dead-end street, so it's not surprising it's a little narrower than some of them.
So, given limited access and narrow driveway shared with two other homes, what steps will be taken to ensure safe emergency vehicle access to proposed development, and what measures will be implemented to ensure safety of pedestrians? It's very limited visibility street, particularly along the high school, the walk where high schoolers walk and the kind of neighborhood children. And also the fire, if there's a fire in this area and the school actually right behind it, what are the, you know, potentials of this situation?
Well, I'm relying on the reviews that were done by the police department and the fire department of the city of this plan. And the police department, I believe, had no comment, and the fire department indicated that access was difficult and that we shouldn't install sprinklers in the building, which we've agreed would be done.
So if you do install sprinklers, would you say having essentially five houses together very closely, would that be enough to kind of prevent any serious fire?
Well, I'm not a fire expert, but-
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
I can say that the other houses on Edgar Street are much closer to each other than this house is to any of them.
No more questions.
Okay. Additional questions for this witness? Seeing none and looking at the clock, there is no way you're getting two more witnesses in tonight. We're not going to be able to do that. We are going to have to carry this case to next year. What would be the date that we'd be looking at, SULIO's?
I think January 1st.
No. We'll tell you. What are we looking at?
Power of positive thought, Joe.
It's on March 3rd.
March 3rd, based on our current calendar. Is that okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to consult with my client on that. I think the time for decision is well before that. I know that there was any-
Well, if you're not going to waive the time for decision-
I can't do that without speaking to my client.
Well, then I'll give you, I'll give you a moment because we- Well, I'll give you, I'll give you a moment, because before, we can't vote on this until we know whether or not you will waive the time for us to make a decision.
If we can take three minutes, I'll walk outside and have a conversation.
Okay, we have another piece of business to do before that.
What was that date?
They don't waive it? Where are voting?
March 3rd.
3rd.
They can do that. Okay, we have a resolution of approval for a, another case, which we will take up at this moment, as long as we have the time. It's for 44 Lennox?
Yeah. So, we have 44 Lennox Road, which is block 2501, Lot 20, ZB-24-2255. That was Bill and Emily Ekman. Our eligible voting members for this resolution are Chairman Steiner, Vice Chairman Luykens, Mr. Yuko, Mr. Nelson.
We're not done with the case, you may want to hang out.
It hasn't officially been carried yet, so if you have public comments, you want to, you got to wait and make sure it's done.
All right. I'll just continue with the eligible voting members. They were Mr. Nelson, Ms. Zahn, Mr. Kirin, and Mr. Malley. Can we have a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes, or I'll second.
No.
Now, this is the resolution second.
Never mind.
All right, I'm sorry. Who made the motion? It was Chairman Steiner, right?
Yeah.
And then a second?
Mr. Malley.
Okay. Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Luykens?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
All right, so this puts me in a very bad spot. What are we voting on?
44 Lennox, resolution.
Oh, yes.
Great. Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
The motion carries. Do you want to move on to the minutes now?
Why not?
Or are they okay?
Why not? Let's finish it up.
All right. So, these are the minutes from December 2nd. We could do a voice vote, but we would exclude the members who were not present that evening, which were Vice Chairman Luykens, Mr. Kirin, and Mr. Feskins. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Aye.
I'll take Mr. Nelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We move back to this case. Do we have a response from...
Confirming that the date was March 3rd is proposed?
Correct.
Yes, all of the experts are available on that date. I am available on that date. We would consent to extend the time of decision until March 3rd, 2025.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Without renotice, correct? I don't have to notice again?
Pardon?
I would not have to renotice again, correct?
No, without notice.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to carry without notice to March 3rd, and that they are waiving the time?
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Vice Chairman Luykens?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the amount of business that we have on the agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn for the year?
Chairman Steiner, before we adjourn, this is Claire's last meeting, so do we need to thank her for her time?
No, she'll be back as an advisor.
Oh, yeah?
Okay.
I was hoping, that's what I was kind of hoping for.
I honestly don't, I believe everybody else is coming back, but I don't know that for sure, and won't know until the council has its vote.
I believe that is the case.
I think it's, I think it's pretty, anyway. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.